Okay. I don't know.
You betcha, Bink. Oh. You betcha, Bink. God, I need to be serious.
Mr. Tipton, were you wearing the mat dye?
No.
Yes, you see.
And I was like, it's reading glasses.
You were not wearing your necessary prescription eyeglasses.
They're reading glasses.
Oh. Oh, good trying.
Well, uh, Mr., uh...
He's a tough one. Mr. Tipton.
Oh my God, I love him.
So would you say you got a better shot of them going in and not so much coming out?
Yeah.
Is it possible?
She's like, yeah.
Two different men drive up in a similar looking car, go in, shoot the clerk.
They didn't have enough time.
Well, how much time was they in the store? Five minutes? Are you sure? Did you look at your watch?
He had wearing his greeting glasses. So he couldn't have just watched.
Eggs and grits.
Eggs and grits. I like grits too.
For the cooking time?
How could it take you five minutes to cook your grits when it takes the entire grit eating world 20 minutes?
Do, do, do.
I'm a fast cook, I guess.
Did you say you're a fast cook? That's it? Are you sure about that five minutes?
I may have been mistaken.
Ooh.
I got no more use for this guy.
There's a problem with these things, right? We're all laughing now. We're like, ha, 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 the grits. But like, you can't mistake... You can't make mistakes like this in a murder trial.
I want him.
I know, we're not gonna see more of him. Sad.
Too good, huh?
She's like, I might get my ring. Oh, and boys might get out.
What are these pictures of?
Is it a bad vision or what?
What are these really big things from the window of your kitchen to the sack of souds?
Ah, trees?
Trees, that's right. Don't be afraid. You shout them right out when you...
He's doing a good job mocking them so nobody takes them serious anymore.
Is it possible you just saw two guys in a green convertible? Not necessarily these two particular guys?
That would mean that would be another green convertible?
Okay, this is 50 feet. How many fingers am I holding up?
Let the record show that counsel's holding up two fingers.
I'm like, dude!
How many fingers am I holding up now? Oh.
Yeah, let's go. The eyewitnesses, right? It's so crazy how bad they are in general, right?
I'm a special automotive instructor of forensic studies.
You can give a no prior notice, he testified. The defense is entitled to advance notice if any witness will testify so that we can properly prepare for cross-examination.
Why is the judge looking so like surprised by this?
That is obnoxious, intelligent, well thought out objection.
What?
Overruled.
What? What?
The chemical composition between the two samples was found to be identical.
I'd like to speak to you in my chamber. You're a dead man.
What's going on? You did so well today.
That's what I knew about Jerry Gallo. And you want to know what your reply was?
Oh.
Jerry Gallo's dead. I'm Jerry Gallo.
All right. Let's get started. Man, he's so fabulous every time.
You got it, honey. You did it. The case cracker. Me in the shower. I'm outta here.
Lisa. Yeah, too little, too late jerk.
Is it possible two separate cars could be driving on Michelin model?
Scum.
Yes!
The most popular tire is on the defendant's car.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Can I have a five minute recess?
Three minutes.
They're gonna get her in three minutes?
I need you to come back into the court.
If you all could, could you please mute your microphones, please?
Toxic, but all right.
Have you ever worked as a mechanic?
Yeah, in my garage, yeah.
But there's being an ex-mechanic necessarily qualify you as being expert on tire...
Whoa, that's such a bad argumentation because...
Oh, all right. I go to DVD store. All right. Thanks, Cory. Okay, bye. Dinner?
For you?
I answered your phone.
Yeah, at some point, I don't know what we put on at some point.
Heard that since I was a kid. I asked you first.
If you're okay with that, sure.
All right. Why don't you take notes?
I'll go downstairs. How does that sound?
Sounds very exciting.
Could everyone please mute their microphones? Hello, Sarah.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Hi, Sarah.
Yeah. Hi, James.
I guess it's Mike. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Brian, Greg, it looks like you're host. Um. Should I reclaim or be a co-host? Everyone could go unmute. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Sarah, you can. I didn't, I didn't mean to come on as host. You can, you can certainly be host.
Okay.
Sarah, do you have my video turned off? This is Jim. I can't turn it on. No, it is. All right. Thank you.
I just go into security and it apparently fixed you.
Here's the girl that never responds to you.
Would everyone please go unmute? Castle Hill grounds, we're hearing you. I see John's on, James on, Brian's on, Sean's on, Jim's on. Sorry, I'm a little late. My computer decided to do an automated update. By fifty-five. Catherine, are you on?
Madam Chairwoman, this is Jeff Engler. For some reason, my video is not working, so I'm gonna just try to log off and log back in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sarah, you might want to tilt your camera down a bit.
I don't see myself right now.
There you go. Are we considering? Faceless.
Ms. Gail on?
I'm here.
Okay. Rebecca Campbell, would you please mute? Catherine's on. As for Glenn is on and Attorney Pucci is on. And the rest of the world.
Catherine just came on, Sarah.
Okay. Would iPhone Margaret please mute? Chris McDonald, please mute. Thank you, everyone for coming. I will call the zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order at seven oh four PM on Wednesday, February ninth. Um, with me from the board, I have Jim Dietrich, Ryan Solace, Sean's on, James Mitchell, John Benares, and Catherine Powell. And Gail Hunter is taking minutes. Um. This meeting is being recorded and Gail Hunter is taking the minutes. I wish to call the continued public hearing of the forty B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter forty B, Sections twenty to twenty-three, to construct the hundred and thirty-six unit apartment complex for which the housing, for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at School Street Assessor's Map Number forty-three, Lot Number eighteen, filed with the town clerk on September twenty-seventh, twenty-one. Chris McDonald, would you please mute yourself? I'd like to remind people of the ground rules for this meeting. It is being recorded. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom and wait to be recognized by the chair. All comments made must be through the chair and not directly to anybody else in the meeting. The board will be discussing various components of the traffic peer review. We will try to reach a consensus, seek input from the town officials, see public input. The board will discuss again, and then we will ask Mr. Engler. G Davis, would you please mute yourself? Um, then we will ask Mr. Engler for his reaction to any request we make. Mr. Engler, I ask you to speak only when I call on you. Are those ground rules okay with the board?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Come with me, Sarah.
Thanks. This is a very tedious process mandated by the state. The application before us is seeking waivers from our local bylaws. We must consider every aspect of the requested waivers and to weigh the impact of the waiver on the town against the need for affordable housing. For any given waiver requested, we may approve it, deny it, or impose a condition. Mr. Pucci, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Pucci from Town Council's office, thank you for calling on me, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add to what you just said. I, I would just reiterate. In terms of the process, if folks can be respectful of the chair's ability to, you know, keep an orderly process on the hearing and not sort of crosstalk or weigh in as they see fit. So she's gonna run a meeting where she will call on certain individuals to make presentations. She'll bring it back to the board for discussion, comments, and questions. She will solicit other replies as, as needed, including from the applicant. So I would request everybody to be, everybody has been very respectful. Respectfully, I would just say to the applicant, it's very hard as you're sitting here in the Zoom context not to sort of chime in or crosstalk as, you know, issues come up that you may have a position on, but, but I do respectfully ask you to wait and be quiet until Sarah asks you for a response or an answer to a question would be very helpful to this process. And in follow-up to your comments, Madam Chair, about the, you know, this process. We are in now the stage of this comprehensive hearing, permit hearing process that we're getting into the nitty gritty, talking, starting to talk about substantive issues, peer review comments, responses to that. Everyone should be aware, including the public and anyone who wants to either present independent third-party reports responding to this project or make or ask questions of the board or peer reviewers or of the applicant through the chair or present any type of position and opposition to the project. Everyone will be provided an adequate opportunity to be heard. So as we're going through this process, we're honing, you know, I'm honing my advice to the chair about how to have a orderly process and make sure that everything substantive gets covered during these hearings. Ultimately, the board is, this is gonna come back to the board. And as Sarah, you noted, the board is gonna consider these individual waiver requests. You're gonna first make a determination whether you have sufficient evidence before you on the record to act on the request at all. And if not, why not? And send that back to the applicant. If you do have sufficient information to act on the waiver, you're then gonna consider whether, you know, there are compelling concerns that either the waiver should be denied substantively or if it should be allowed in whole or in part, and if so, to what extent. So you're gonna be looking at that issue. The other issue that will come up is ultimately you're gonna have to decide whether, whether it's looking as though you could properly condition the housing proposal so as to properly protect local concerns, you know, with health and safety, open space, environmental resources and concerns, or whether there are compelling reasons to deny the project. So you're gonna have to keep in mind your ultimate goal on this. So this is an information and evidence gathering process to enable you to make a meaningful decision down the line on these very important issues. So the way the, the chair is intending to do this is, as she has been doing, she will provide agendas, you know, in advance of a public hearing session, you'll be notified of the topics that she intends to address. You know, she'll go through the process, hearing from peer reviewers, hearing responses, discussing with the board, and opening it up to public comment or third-party input. If there's not time in that particular session to hear from everybody who wants to be heard, she will continue that discussion on that topic to the next hearing date. So hopefully that answers somewhat folks' concern, you know, as we're getting into the process where we're finally getting into the substantive review of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci.
So the first thing I wanted to mention is that this morning there was a site visit with Beals and Thomas, our environmental and engineering peer reviewer and the applicant's consultant. I believe, I wasn't able to attend, but I believe some of the zoning Board of Appeals members did attend, and I'm wondering if they have any comments with respect to that site visit.
Sarah, I was there and I don't really have any comments. We conducted a site walkthrough with two engineers from Beals and Thomas, and then there was an engineer representing the applicant. And Catherine, Hal, and I were there for about an hour. And then we left and let them do their work. They were there for a much longer time.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, Sarah, this is Catherine. I don't have a lot to add to that. We walked around with them, the only thing. And I don't know what happened after I left, but while we were there, they were looking at one area of, I'm gonna use the wrong, I don't know if it was a vernal pool or wetlands that had before been dry and now appeared to be flowing and possibly connecting under School Street to a water source. So I don't know what they determined about that. That was the only, you know, I, they were kind of making notes about it and working on it and, and they, there may have been other, other findings and determinations that, you know, we weren't privy to, but we were there, we walked the site, we observed and listened. And then when they indicated they were gonna be there several more hours and we're sliding out of the ice, we said, okay, we need to go now. So it was, it was useful and I, you know, was happy to attend, but that's my, sort of, that's what I got from it so far.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move to the traffic peer review. On February, that February third, we received the report from Greg Lucas of Environmental Partners responding to the, he had done a preliminary peer review. Vanessa Associates, the consultant for the applicant, made comments to his initial peer review. And he has responded back to the original comments he made. Mr. Lucas, are you on in the meeting and would you like to just give us a highlight of the areas that perhaps you have the greatest concern that we should pay attention to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am here and I'm happy to give a, a brief overview of our most recent review. We had originally submitted a letter on January tenth with our review of the initial traffic study and some of the site components. Attended the January hearing and presented those findings. And then we received responses from Finas and Associates. And also there were a couple of issues that were responded to by Embark, the architect on the project. And so we resolved those responses and prepared another memo that notes our, our initial comment, the response received, and then our follow-up comment in, in some cases with regards to some of the existing information that was presented, it was just to clarify or to note corrections. And so we've accepted and closed those comments. Some of the more significant issues that still need discussion for the board are related to site driveway. There, we had commented that the site driveway is far longer than what the bylaws require. The applicant's response was related to the fire chief, the fire chief's opinion on that, on the length of the driveway and the ability for emergency access to serve the site. While we understand that and recognize the fire chief as the, as, as the, the authority having jurisdiction on that matter, that doesn't answer the fact that the driveway still is not in compliance with the bylaws and providing justification as to why it can't be, or whether alternatives were considered that were in compliance. So that's one outstanding issue that should be considered by the board. With regards to parking, there were a couple of comments related to, one related to parking space dimensions. And they provided a thorough and adequate response noting that the nine-by-eighteen space that they provide, while not in compliance with zoning bylaw, is common and designed throughout Massachusetts. It's a common standard in other communities. We confirm that. We would be comfortable as peer reviewer with nine-by-eighteen spaces noting that it is common for other residential developments, especially garage structures in this region. The other issue is regarding the number of spaces that are proposed. The number of spaces provided do not meet the zoning bylaws. They've provided some response that gives some ratios for comparable sites. And we acknowledge that those are, you know, common parking ratios that are provided and just ask for a little more information to make sure that those sites are truly comparable, specifically the proximity to transit and the proximity to other pedestrian-focused amenities. Because we know that here, without sidewalk connections and without immediate transit, people are going to be need, need to use their cars. We make sure that that characteristic is similar for these similar sites. We also, we also provided a review of some of the waivers and, Madam Chair, it sounded like you wanted to discuss those in more detail. So again, the parking is something that in general they've responded to, but need a little bit more information on parking ratios. Some of the site components are things that, at least in the materials we've reviewed, we haven't seen justification as to why it's not in compliance. And then there were a few other things that were waivers that had already been granted by the planning board. And so those we didn't offer comment on. The final point that we included in our memorandum was an opinion on the advisory opinion that had been provided by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. This is in regard to compliance to state law requiring accessible route. And the town had asked the Architectural Access Board, the AAB, to provide opinion on whether an accessible route needed to be provided for this project. And they, they, the Architectural Access Board had provided that opinion to say that they found that per that state law, that it would require an accessible route. The project would require an accessible route, meaning a sidewalk for pedestrians, likely along the site driveway, but serving a connection from the building to the road to School Street. And we, as peer reviewer, we don't take exception to that. The AAB is the authority in this matter, and they've stated their opinion and made it clear. I think we also noted that the inclusion of a sidewalk serving the site, connecting to School Street, meets the goals both of the town, is some of their Complete Streets Initiative and the intent to improve pedestrian access along School Street. And the stated measures that were stated in the applicant's study, TDM being Traffic Demand Management, promoting additional mode split used by other means other than cars, pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera. Having those connections promotes that use. And so that's a general overview, and I'm happy to speak specifically to any of the, any of the outstanding comments, either now or as the discussion goes along here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
We also received a report that had been prepared by Mr. Black on behalf of the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. I wonder if Mr. Black is in the meeting and wishes to present any additional highlights that we should take into consideration.
This is David Black speaking. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I will keep my comments to be very brief because I think many of the points that I've raised were reflected in the comments made by Mr. Lucas. And I, I'll try and be as brief as possible and summarize my, my sort of overall feeling. I'll start with my sort of feeling about transportation sustainability because this is clearly a, I would say, almost totally auto-dependent project. And I think there's no dispute that there are no existing pedestrian connections serving the site. There are no bicycle connections serving the site. And it is a considerable distance from the commuter rail station, which would require, I think, in most cases, an auto trip to get there. And this is important, I think, not just for commuting trips, but also for the day-to-day trips that people need to go to the shops or whatever they, schools, whatever they do. Having said that, it's not in my mind just a question of what is off-site, it's what is proposed onsite. And Mr. Lucas talked about the absence of a sidewalk on the site, which to me is a, a very, very significant sort of missing piece in the site plan. Even with a sidewalk provided, I think you also need to bear in mind that it is a very long walk from the building to even get to School Street if there were, were a sidewalk provided there. And that I think is a result of the fact that there is just this single access point, which, you know, is, is, I think, understood also. I saw the, the fire chief's comments and he is satisfied with that from an emergency access point of view. But I think the accessibility issue needs to be addressed on that. This in turn, I think, I make these comments really because they are the counterpoint for the Transportation Demand Management Plan. And these, as you know, are things that we, transportation professionals propose to encourage people or compel people to use different modes other than traveling by auto. And the trouble here, I think, is that in the absence of any realistic alternative modes of transportation, TDM just cannot be expected to be effective. I mean, I just, I don't think, whatever you do, providing bike racks or whatever it is in terms of transportation demand management, giving people free MBTA passes, it is, it's really not going to have, it's really not going to move the, the needle on, on that particular mode shared dial. The traffic analysis, I won't go into any detail. I've, I've reviewed in some detail the original analysis prepared by Vanas Associates. I've reviewed Mr. Lucas's peer review, and I think I'm generally on the same page. However, one thing that's jumped out at me is that the traffic analysis is focusing on the weekday peak hours, the weekday commuter peak hours. And my sense is that a project like this, because of its location, should really be looking also at a weekend because Manchester is traffic conditions in Manchester vary dramatically by day of week, especially during the summer months. And it's very, very likely that a worse condition under bill conditions would exist during the summer months when the, the traffic volume is significant because residential projects do tend to generate similar levels of traffic, traffic, traffic on a Saturday, say, or a Sunday compared to the weekday peak hour. Those were, those were my main points. I think the only other thing that I would raise is that I've not seen a plan that demonstrates that the sightlines in the driveway can be satisfied. It looks pretty good out there. When you stand at the location, it's on the outside of a curve. But it's important that the site, that the sightlines are protected. And I haven't seen a plan that shows that that protection can be provided within land that is under the control of the, the owner of the site. And finally, Mr. Lucas talked about the, the parking supply. I do think my approach to parking supply is to rely very heavily on what the institution of transportation engineers recommends. And they, for a project, they base it on the number of units or the number of bedrooms. And interestingly enough, or coincidentally in this case, if you base it on the number of bedrooms or the number of units, it comes out with exactly the same number of spaces. And that, that has been, that seems to be satisfied with what the developer is proposing. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's a summary of, of my own review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So what my plan is to, is to go through the various sections and see if the board has any questions, concerns, you know, comments, where you think we should be headed. It seems to me the project description piece has been resolved. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments on the existing data, traffic data?
Sarah, it's James. I had one, one comment or one group of comments regarding the traffic. The traffic, the traffic study does suggest that some of the intersections be improved, particularly the on and off ramps to one-twenty-eight due to increased traffic and safety concerns. And it further suggests or makes clear that the applicant is not responsible for funding the entire cost of those improvements just for the proposed increase. I'm wondering about that. I'm also wondering, it does mention bicycles and it's too narrow for real bicycle safety. The, several other people have already mentioned about the completed sidewalks project Manchester has in mind. So those are good things. But I'm also wondering, there was several references to traffic calming measures. And these are things like radar, speed reminders and things like that. And my question is, you know, how will those be funded and would that be considered a, what do they call it, a, like a contribution from, a fair share contribution from the developer to help mitigate the cost of those additional traffic calming features? So those are my questions surrounding traffic.
Thank you, James.
Sarah, this is Catherine. I am just want to be clear about what we're doing here to keep in order. Are we only commenting on the existing traffic data section right now? Or are we commenting throughout? Because James had some great comments, but some of them, I think, went into other sections. And I'm just trying to, to de-orderly.
Well, I was going to do it section by section, but would you suggest something different?
Me? No, I don't have any different suggestions. I just, I'm just trying to follow the rules you want me to follow. So we're just, we're focusing on the existing traffic data section right now, right?
Correct.
Great. Okay. So I think I don't really have any, I have one question, which is when the environmental partners' response is something like information provided, comment closed, does that mean that the information provided is sufficient and appropriate or just that it was provided?
Mr. Lucas, can you respond to that question?
That it means, it means that we're satisfied with the response provided. In some cases, it's information provided means that we were looking for clarification and we were looking for additional information, and that was provided. There's also a, a generally kind of a tacit approval of what was provided, meaning that we look at the additional information was provided and had no further comment. So generally, in each comment, where at the end we say comment closed, that means that we're satisfied that the initial comment has been adequately responded to by the applicant's traffic engineer.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anything else, Catherine?
Not on this section, no.
Okay. Brian, do you have any questions or comments on the existing traffic data section?
No, it's just a comment. I agree with Mr. Black that summer and weekend traffic doesn't seem to be accounted for. I'm also concerned with, inasmuch as this is basically a commuter community, as far as the building itself goes, the impact on the commuter rail station itself and the limited parking that there is now, understanding that during COVID, that there's a lot of space there. But I think we all can agree that pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID, there are cars that race through Harbor, Harbor's Point trying to get parking spots. And then whatever's going to spill over there, they're going to be racing down one-twenty-seven, try to get to the farms. And I'm just curious if that kind of, are those concerns, are they valid concerns? And if then, if someone could comment on that, Mr. Black or Mr. Lucas?
I'd be happy to comment. It's, it's a, it's a very good comment. I, because I think, as I said in my comments, if you're going to use the commuter rail, you're going to have to drive there to, to use it. So there would undoubtedly be some impact to parking conditions at, at the station. I'm, I'll be honest, I, I'm not regularly there during the daytime, so I can't testify as to what those conditions are on a day-to-day basis.
And I think, Brian, just as a point is that Vanasi didn't include anything with respect to parking at the commuter rail station. So the peer reviewer would not have looked at that under this process. It's not to say it isn't something we can consider, but under the peer review process. So we'll make note of that and circle back around to that later.
Sarah, this is Catherine. I just, I wanted to concur on this. I think the weekend data is important as, as almost, I'm sure everyone on this call knows, we get a lot of weekend traffic for our beaches. And so looking at what that weekend traffic is now and what, if any, impacts would be from this project, I think is important. It already is congested on the weekends often because we have a beautiful beach, right? So if you want to come see it, that's great, but we don't want more accidents or traffic jams, so.
And just to add to piggyback on Catherine, Manchester, although it might not be a great destination location, it's a great town to drive through as a destination location, it's a great town to drive through as someone's going somewhere else. And most of that traffic is is 127. They're they're just watching and just enjoying the ride. And it's quick to walk downtown, then drive downtown during the summer. And so I just, again, that's a concern.
Okay, thank you. John, did you have any comments on the existing traffic data?
No, not on this section. Thank you.
Sean?
No, I have nothing else to add. I just kind of on the same lines with Catherine and Brian. With the weekend traffic being looked at.
Okay.
So Sarah, is, are we, are we holding our are we, are we making requests now? Are we holding all of our, like, if we were going to request that a study be done for weekend traffic data? Are we, are we doing that now? Are we holding all those requests to the end?
I think we should hold them to the end. Mr. Pucci, do you have an opinion on that?
It depends on what you mean by the end.
In this meeting.
If you keep track of them and and then, yeah, at the end, you could identify the action items that you're requesting further studies or follow up on. Just don't go beyond this meeting. I I think you definitely have to put that request out there to the applicant tonight and to their traffic engineer. You know, I did want to comment on just one thing that you had said, Sarah. About if something is not addressed in in the applicant's engineer's report, it doesn't mean that it's not a valid issue that could have been flagged by your peer reviewer or by some third party. So so you're free to, you know, inquire about those issues further. So I would just keep track of what further information or data requests you want to make from the applicant, keep track of it tonight. Clearly identify those as action items before you close tonight's session. And we could even follow up with a, you know, a a letter with bullet points or an email, you know, if that's if that's helpful as well.
So perhaps we should take a vote at the end of each of these little sections as to additional information.
You can. I mean, you don't want to get too cumbersome. I mean, if there's general consensus, which it sounds like, you know, you have some pretty good consensus there about further data that you're looking for in accordance with your peer reviewers' recommendation. You can vote everything, but, you know, if you have general consensus, you have to kind of do this in a reasonable way.
And Sarah, Sarah, this is Catherine. I just want to offer, I've already started a list of things. So if you want me to be in charge of keeping a list of the requests to vote on sort of at the end, I can do, at the end of this meeting, I can do that.
Okay, but I think he says we just need consensus. We don't need a formal vote.
That would be great, though. That's good. Then you could, you could vote on that whole basket without doing each one. I could just vote on the basket that she's keeping track of.
Thank you, Catherine. Ezra Glenn, did you want to say something?
Yep, just to add to that, as you're discussing each topic, you might want to remember you have in the room your peer reviewer and the applicant. And, you know, I don't want to put the peer reviewer before the board's concern, but it might be worth asking the peer reviewer, you know, the board's interested in in traffic data for weekends or for seasonal data. You didn't flag that. Do you suspect there'd be any reason that that would shed any light or anything? Or is that really just a waste of time? And similarly, asking the applicant, is that easy data to provide? Or is this something you're gonna squawk about and it's gonna drag the project process down, in which case we need to discuss that and flag that now? If if the applicant says, oh, that's easy, I have that right here. Then it's an easy request. But if it's going to be a sticking point, we want to know that now. Not that that means you can't ask for it, but it'd be good to at least be aware of what's gonna, what's an easy request and what's a complicated one. At the minimum, check with the peer reviewer, I'd say.
Yeah, I think we'll ask the applicant at the end when we have the whole list. I think it will be a little easier. Mr. Lucas, do you have an opinion on the weekend data and summer data and commuter rail parking?
So as far as weekend data goes, I think that we expect the demand for the surrounding roadway network to be greatest in the weekday peak hours. And so that's why we hadn't, in our review, we hadn't flagged a need for Saturday data. While the demand from this proposed development may be a greater percentage of the street traffic in the Saturday peak hour, typically we'd analyze the Saturday midday peak hour, which is that middle of the day, early afternoon. It likely won't show, and I don't know this without seeing the data. This is just my my opinion based on what I know about similar studies and what I know of the area. It likely won't show the depth of delay and operational concerns that we see for specifically the Route 128 ramps in the weekday commuter peak hours. So I think that it's useful information. It's not likely to show a more impactful situation than what we already see in the analysis that's been provided for the weekday peak hour. Regards to summer. These studies, per guidelines set by the state, are based on a typical month, and they look at seasonal adjustment as part of that. They aren't analyzing, nor are they expected to analyze a peak condition, so a summer condition. I think the expectation is that this is in Manchester by the Sea, a community that has a peak of traffic in the summer. And that's understood by the developer and will be understood by their potential residents. So the specific analysis of that, we wouldn't expect that. Now would be atypical and an unusual demand of the board on the applicant's traffic engineer. With regards to the commuter rail station, I'm not familiar with the Manchester by the Sea commuter rail station. COVID is the great unknown, and and that was, you know, in the comments made, acknowledging that COVID is a great unknown. There isn't demand now for the commuter rail station. It would be difficult for the applicant's traffic engineer to provide an analysis, a meaningful analysis that looks at what the demand is and what the additional demand of this facility might be. That being said, there might be data that already exists from the MBTA that could provide some of that information. If that exists, it would be helpful to provide that for the board's review. But I don't think, again, we wouldn't expect the applicant to review a transit facility's parking capacity as justification for a residential development.
Okay, thank you. Is the police chief on? Do you want to speak to any of this existing traffic data and weekend versus weekdays?
Hi, Sarah. I am on, no, I'm just gonna, you know, defer to the traffic engineers. My, I think my only question was is how they came up with the metrics in regards to the intersections that were reported that were near capacity or almost at capacity. I'd like to see that data myself. And also the the sidewalk up School Street, I think Chuck and I and the fire chief are all in agreement that that would probably be necessary safety issue to look at moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, can you talk to the metrics for the intersections? I believe they changed a lot between the first report and the revised report.
The, as far as the the analysis methodologies?
Yeah.
I I don't believe there was, there was some change because there was some question, we had questioned the just gonna pull that up. We had questioned the peak hours used, and that had some impact on the analysis, but it was significant in that it already showed an intersection that was operating at level of service depth with with some excessive delay for the 128 off ramp, and it showed more of that excessive delay and a little bit more queuing. So it it did show additional impact in the revised information from what was found in the original traffic study.
And I believe part of that is because we're in a regional school district and the prior metrics did not include students going to school.
No, as far as the, no, as far as the the traffic volumes didn't change. It was, it was comments on the specific factors used in the analysis that, you know, they use a, they use the common analysis program that's used in our industry synchro. And it has, you know, certain factors that are included with regards to the distribution of traffic within the peak hour, the number of heavy vehicles. And so there were some changes to those parameters that then impacted the result. But there wasn't any change in the in the volumes used from the initial traffic study.
Okay, thank you.
The base data. There was no change in the base data.
Does board good with this section?
Yeah, I'm good, sir.
Sarah?
Yes, I forgot you, Jim. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I had my microphone muted. The talk of traffic is all very interesting, and I don't have any, I I commend our reviewer and our peer reviewer for doing a very comprehensive job. However, we see a big uptick in traffic, particularly on Saturdays and Sundays relative to the beach. There are times when you can't even get to the beach. And so I think it's reasonable to assume that if 136 apartments are placed in town, a number of those people are going to want to go to the beach because they will get a parking permit, they will be residents. And I haven't heard anyone address that issue yet because it wasn't part of any of the studies. But nevertheless, if the residents of the town are having difficulty getting to the beach now, I can only imagine what it must be, what it could be like in a summer down the road with all these additional residents of the town trying to get to the beach. The roads are not going to get any wider. The beach parking is not going to be made any larger because I think it's pretty well hemmed in by the beach club and residences. And I think it's a fair issue to ask the reviewers and the applicant. How are you going to keep, how are you going to deal with this issue? Because it's already there and it's only going to be exacerbated by the addition of 136 residences in town. I don't know how to phrase that question, but that's up to the chair. But I think it's a worthy one to ask the traffic experts, the applicant, to address because it will be an issue and we will have to deal with it. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that it's it's within your, it's within your purview to ask the applicant to to take a look at those things and provide some, while there may not be concrete information because they don't have the ability to count, you know, to count actual beach demand in absence of having data from that time period last year, we're not going to wait for that time period this year. So it might have to be more of a qualitative assessment of what that impact might be to the town.
Thank you. I'm now going to move on to crash data. Does anyone on the board have any questions with respect to crash data? Catherine?
Of course, I have a question, Sarah. Calling on me. My question right now is whether this, I I read through this crash data. And I didn't see anything about like pedestrian versus car or bicycle versus car. And I'm wondering if that's because those accidents didn't occur or because that's not part of the data set that's considered. Are we only considering car on car crashes here?
I thought it was in the table, but I'll ask Mr. Lucas to respond to that.
Data set would include all crashes involving vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles. So I don't have the table in front of me to report to what those numbers were, but it would be included.
So it's in the Vanessa revised report, Catherine.
Okay, I I was looking at the summary. I'll look at the revised report. Thanks. I just want to make sure that we had it all covered. Yep.
Sean, do you have any questions on this section?
I'm good, sir.
Brian?
That's pretty clear cut. Thank you.
Jim?
I will make one more comment, Sarah, if I may. I believe James or someone mentioned traffic calming devices. I'm not sure who mentioned that. Mr. Lucas may have even mentioned it, or Mr. Black may have mentioned it.
Yeah, so Jim, we're gonna talk about that later.
Oh, thank you. Good. I'll hold my comment. Thank you, sir.
It comes up later. Yep. James, do you have any questions on the crash data?
I don't. I was the one who mentioned the traffic calming stuff, and we're gonna get to that later. I have no further comments in this section. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
No.
Next section is trip distribution. I think this was an issue in the table created. Is that right, Mr. Lucas? The numbers were switched?
Yeah, this was a, this was a very minor issue where there were a couple of numbers juxtaposed, which meant a change in one or two trips. So the corrected information's been provided.
Okay. Future traffic volumes build conditions. So you seem to indicate, Mr. Lucas, that there's some missing data.
That was the initial comment was that there was, it was a a summary table of projected traffic volume increases. And there was some, the areas of the greatest impact weren't included. It was clarified as to what the intent of the table was, that was increases resulting external to the study area. And so that was updated based on our comments to clarify and show that, you know, some of the significant, most significant increases, as expected, the segment of School Street between the site driveway and the Route 128 Southbound ramps. And, you know, and we note from that revised study, the revised data provided what those percentage increases are. So it's really, it was a comment on some unclear data that was provided, asking for clarification that was provided.
Let's move to traffic operations. So this is where we get into the situation that the intersections are at or near capacity and in need of mitigation. And what do we do about it? So what are people's thoughts on this section? So the comment is it doesn't address construction of potential improvements. It's just published design.
Or it's James. It it does suggest that we should further confirm the intersection is in need of mitigation to support the additional traffic load. But it doesn't suggest what that mitigation might be. So I would look for the the traffic professionals for suggestions in that regard. It's not specific, in other words.
Mr. Lucas, you have a comment on that?
Sure. You know, what what they're proposing is to do additional study to determine what those improvements might be. Without that, without that additional study and evaluation of potential mitigation, we don't know what those measures would be. What, what we can say in general terms is that there's a need for some sort of improvement aimed at capacity. some sort of improvement aimed at capacity that could be a change in traffic control. It could be additional lanes, turn lanes. It could be aroundabout. It could be signalization. There's a lot of tools in the toolbox as to what that could be. And the applicant project has committed to that study and conceptual improvements. Our comment was that those, those measures study and coming up with conceptual improvements and handing that back to the town doesn't mitigate anything. It doesn't implement anything. So the suggestion was that there the, and the comment, the comment was made about, you know, the, the, the impact of the project and the potential cost and that, that we get into that further with some other responses. But, you know, there needs to be further discussion as to how we can expand what's proposed with study to something that has a realistic chance of being implemented to address what we know to be an existing problem, a future problem, just based on background growth that is somewhat exacerbated by additional traffic that might be generated by the belt.
Okay. Brian, do you have any questions, thoughts on this?
I just, maybe just one. At the, at the ramps, the bottom of the ramps. If there's mitigation required, would this, is that state property or is that town property? Is the state required to be involved in helping to defray those costs or does this solely in the applicant in the town?
Coming to the garden this spring.
I have no idea.
Sandy, please mute.
Did you hear what I said?
Yeah, yeah. Go to the garden.
Am I invited to the garden?
Anyway, that's my question is that at some point is that the state's purview at the, at the bottom of the ramps and that, that to change? Is that their money, not ours?
Mr. Lucas, can you respond to that with respect to the 128 ramps?
So to answer the first question, it is the state's, it is the state's jurisdiction and it is the state's purview. To answer the second question, it isn't necessarily the state's money. And so that's, you know, that's part of the issue here is that having the idea of what needs to be done here is great, but it would require some commitment of, of funding. Now, the state has a number of ways in which a project can be advanced. There's TIP program, which is a, you know, a lengthy process, but typically even on, even on state owned property, state owned roadway like these ramps, the state may expect the town in a TIP project to foot the design cost. So, you know, those are the types of things that need to be considered looking forward at might, might be a project here. And it isn't really appropriate at this point to engage the state as to what their commitment might be. But there is no expectation that the state, even if someone points out, hey, there's a problem here, that the state would fix it even though they on the road.
Mr. Glenn, did you want to say something?
If, if possible, yes, thanks. This, this is a fairly common situation to have happen in a, in a permit review process where you have a project coming into an existing situation, lots of things going on, plans the town might have, other projects going on, background changes. And they are, as I understand it, offering to do something to help mitigate their impact while fully understanding they can't fully solve all the problems. And even more complicated, we don't know what solution we want for all the problems because the town is still trying to sort things out. I think usually the easiest way to deal with this sort of thing, you know, you're under some time pressure to make a decision and the developer is under some time pressure to want to get his project going. And typically what happens then is the developer ideally will make some kind of offer, you know, what they view as a mitigation package. They put that forward and the town can decide, okay, does this seem like a reasonable, fair share towards the impact of this thing, which gives the town the flexibility and the sort of nimbleness to address the issue as they see fit. They could do something immediate, you know, put up signs, put up radar guns. They could use the money for a larger study and seek federal funding or whatever it is to solve a comprehensive problem. But it doesn't stop the project or slow the project down. You know, so I think I would really, that's a sort of creative way to solve it. The less creative way is to simply mandate what the applicant has to do. But the downside there is we may wind up signing up for some short term fixes that are less comprehensive and less flexible. Your town engineer, your police chief might say, why did we just put up three stop signs? And a, you know, and a, and a, and a go slow children sign rather than use that money to comprehensively understand this, you know, and deal with it. So I think that's what I would recommend is at least seeing what the applicant's recommendation is for mitigation package. And then bring that to your town engineers, your, your own review. And if you want to reshape it, you're at least in negotiation then.
Okay, thank you. Catherine?
Yeah, Sarah, I just wanted to know, you know, when I read this, I think that it's great. And you know, it's, it's lovely that the applicant has offered to do a study and conceptual design plan and a cost estimate. But I, from my perspective, I think I would be looking for some more commitment to actually funding the improvement. And I'm not sure what that commitment would be because I understand the applicant is not required to fully fund improvements on, you know, areas that are already near at capacity. But, you know, I'd be looking for some, I think I maybe unless someone, you know, town council, someone corrects me, looking for some sort of a commitment from the applicant, you know, are they going to fund 20% of the improvement? What are they?
Yeah, I think Catherine, that's what Mr. Glenn was referencing regarding the applicant propose a mitigation package.
Yes, I think so as well. I just kind of restating it in slightly different.
And, and you could ultimately, that one question on it, Sarah, was about, you know, funding on it. Down the line, you, you could reach in a, you know, a condition regarding a proportionate share. How you come up with that? It would be subject to this process and maybe your peer reviewer could weigh in. So not only have the design and the proposals, but a, you know, proportionate share of the cost of that. And as everyone recognized, you know, you can't put the burden of on the applicant of solving a preexisting problem. But you can impose conditions that for a proportionate share to the extent to which the project would further exacerbate a problem or in terms of mitigating the, the project's further contribution to that issue.
Thank you, Mr. That's what I was trying to say.
John, do you have any comments, thoughts on this section? Questions?
No, I have nothing really more to add than what's been already said by Mr. Glenn and Mr. Pucci and Catherine. I'm in agreement with all that. Thanks.
Okay, James?
Yes, Sarah, I, I think at a minimum, we should add this to our list of questions and ask for the study that might identify what improvements and what the conceptual cost estimate might be. So I would suggest that we add it to our, our list that Catherine is keeping track of meeting. Because essentially we're, we're, we're talking about asking for additional information, correct?
Well, I, I think that the, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how long a study takes. So I think it all may be part of the same package of conducting a study and then a share in the actual construction costs or something like that.
It could be. And then, and when we offer Mr. Engler a chance to comment, he may have some insights to that as well, which will help shape our decision going forward.
Brian, did I call on you?
I think I'm the one that's not open up this morning's nest, so I'm all set.
Okay, Jim?
I'm okay.
Sean?
Yeah, I mean, Sarah, the only thing I, I mean, I use that intersection every day on the northbound and reading this thing, I mean, the, the whole thing about the at or near capacity right now. And then my concern is if, if this project was to move forward and not to have any mitigation, is, would this be enough to actually back up the traffic onto the highway? So I think we need a little more information here.
Mr. Lucas, on, on the peer review, did it actually back up the cars enough to go on to 128?
I didn't look at, I didn't compare the queue lengths to the capacity of the ramp. I don't think that it does. The important thing to consider is that this, the impact that's shown, the majority of that comes from just the impact of future traffic. It isn't specific to this, it isn't specific to the development. They're looking at a horizon that's seven years in the future. And so it's looking at a nominal annually compounded growth in existing traffic that contributes most of that deficiency.
Okay.
So just as a, just as a foreinstance, the difference in that queue in the evening is two cars in the morning and five cars in the evening on that ramp between the no build and the build. So that's including the impact of the development. The delay is excessive level service app in all conditions.
Sarah, I have one more question to that.
Sure.
Then, then on the response from the VA AI, they have only that they're only responsible for the mitigation to the increment change. How would we, how would that be calculated?
I, I think that's part of the whole mitigation package. And what is proposed initially by the applicant as to what portion they'd be willing to pay. And then we would have to determine whether we feel that's acceptable or not with the help of our DPW and public safety officers. So we'd send it back to the town once we receive something to get input. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, okay, yes.
Jim, did I call on you for traffic operations?
You did, and I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Next one is site access. So if I heard Mr. Lucas correctly, I think he was indicating that even though the fire chief may have indicated that the road was acceptable for fire emergency purposes, that the length of the road is still significantly greater than allowed under our bylaws. And we don't have anything from the applicant explaining why it needs to be that long. Is that correct, Mr. Lucas, of what you're saying?
Correct. There's, there's two different issues here. One is the suitability of emergency access, which has been answered by the fire chief through his authority. And the second is the actual characteristic of the site drive and how it complies with the zoning bylaw. And so we would expect in instances like this to see some justification as to why. There was an additional comment in this section regarding the driveway location. We had questioned the spacing between Atwater Avenue and the drive and why it wasn't located opposite Atwater Avenue. It was clarified that there's wetlands there and so it would not be possible or it would be significant undesirable impacts that locate the driveway directly opposite Atwater Avenue. The offset provided is the maximum that can be provided because the driveway is at the northern edge of the site. So while it may be beneficial to provide additional offset, it is impossible because of the site characteristics. So that was the flavor, the flavor of that comment. And then the other comments in the section were related to the driveway length and the, and the fire access.
Sean, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm, we keep going, we keep talking about the, the fire chief with this and then his letter he had in there. But he does kind of have a condition on there that an approved property maintenance plan for snow removal and ability to keep the roadway clear and accessible for emergency vehicles has to be in place for it to be a one access.
Okay. I'm going to go through the board and have them raise their concerns about the site access and the emergency access. And then I will ask the police chief, excuse me, the fire chief to speak to the reasoning behind his decision that the access is appropriate and only one access is needed. Okay? Because I know this is a point of controversy. Jim Dieter?
Thank you, sir. Well, I've read the letter from the fire chief. And I, Sean has correctly noted that we should have a maintenance plan as to dealing with snow removal and keeping the road clear. I'm not satisfied with the single access. And the fire chief may be satisfied with it, but I also recall that a couple of years ago, just in a single residence because of snow, we had a, a house basically burned down, I believe it did, because they couldn't get to it. Now we're going to have 136 houses sitting up on top of a hill. And the only access is a third of a mile driveway. And I don't know of any other roads in town, any other access in town to any other residents that's a third of a mile long going uphill at a fairly steep grade. And I have a lot of difficulty with that. I realize that the site has limitations, but that's not an issue here. The issue is safety, public safety and access. And I'm not satisfied with the fire chief's comment. I don't know that if something serious were to occur, that we could get enough equipment up there quickly enough, particularly if the road is covered with snow, like what happened in a couple of weekends ago with a couple of feet of snow. We could be putting the lives of 130 families in jeopardy. And I'm not satisfied with that.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Catherine?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. I'm, I'm going to concur with what Jim said. I have serious concerns about this. There was not just the fire, fire a couple of years ago. There was one just a couple of weeks ago where the fire department couldn't access and the house is a total loss over on Old Essex, I think. So, I mean, we have a lot of sites that are hard to access in this town because of just the nature of the town. And this is a, a lot of people in one place with one access road. And it's not just, it's not just them, although, you know, there is, obviously that's the primary concern. But, you know, we call on mutual aid and there could be another emergency somewhere else. And if all of the fire trucks in this town and in Gloucester and in Essex are trying to get up this road or provide long enough hoses to get the, the pump with the most pressure or whatever, and something else happens, you know, we could, it's a concern. I'll put it that way. It's a very serious concern for me. I understand the fire chief. I have read his letter. I respect the fire chief. I get it. It meets the fire code. That's fine. But I have concerns that go beyond the actual, the, the fire code itself.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said, so I don't want to try to sound redundant, but I would also like to point out that this is, this apartment community is one building. And so when there's a fire in this community, everybody's affected. It's not a scattered site type of.
Do we lose John?
He froze.
I guess, you know, I have a concern that goes beyond fire. And my concern is with respect to medical emergencies. If somebody's having a heart attack, a sprinkler system's not going to help you. That you have a limited time within which to respond. And that makes me nervous. James?
You must be reading my mind because I, while I don't agree with some of the comments about the length of the road and the lack of a second means of egress, I did want to point out that this building is not comparable to a single wood frame residence. This building is commercial construction with far less combustible materials, and it is fully sprinkled. So I, I think that it's, it's kind of an apples and oranges scenario. I do think the roadway or a single roadway still poses some problems. I also noted in the review that it's not, it hasn't been determined if the water pressure is sufficient enough to supply fire protection and sprinkler service. And that there's no, there could be a need for a pumping station or a pump of some kind. So this, this is a complicated issue and, and it's, I also understand that from a desirability or a profit, or not a profitability, but a feasibility aspect economically. It may not be economically feasible to build a second road, which would then call into question, is this site even appropriate for what's being proposed? So it's, this is a thorny issue. I, I still have not made any kind of final decision on any of these issues. But I think there's a lot of moving parts here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Angler, your hand is raised. Would you like to make a brief comment?
We understand and respect people's interest in a second means of egress. We simply can't provide it. It's not an economic issue. We can't fit it based on all the resource areas. We talked out length with the fire chief on three occasions. And this building is going to be the safest building in the town relative to the code that we're building it to. Remember, clearly indicated already that the, the means of construction relative to the sprinkling, just to mention a few. So issues that have happened with other single family houses are not relevant to what's going to, how this building is going to be constructed. Moreover, as is customary on any 40B, we'll gladly submit a full operations and maintenance plan as a condition of any building permit, that the building commissioner and the fire chief will have the opportunity to review, which will, among other things, identify, you know, snow removal, snow removal locations, contractors, et cetera, et cetera, all that stuff. So we know, listen, I, I'm going to speak candidly. We, we know our opposition groups latched on to this issue because they saw it as a way to try to stop the project. We've worked very hard and we've worked very closely with the fire department to make sure they're satisfied. And I think their, 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 their memo speaks for itself. We're not, not suppo, not supplying a second means of egress because we don't want to, we can't fit it. So we've done everything else relative road width and safety of the building and code compliance that we can do. And, 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 you know, so if, if the, if the town required a second means of egress, it would be tantamount to denying the permit because we can't provide it. So just as an FYI. And I know I'm going to have a chance at the end to comment on all the questions that have been raised, but I appreciate Mr. Lucas's comments very thoroughly. But we looked at why is the road so long? Why is it, we, believe me, we studied the grades of the, of this site extensively. And the design before this board was fully vetted from our whole technical team, and it's the best way to access the site based on environmental considerations, grades, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Angler. We'll ask you to provide us the reasoning for that driveway in writing probably. Okay. We'll get to that and the list at the end.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, thank you. Brian?
Yeah, Sarah, thank you. I'm going to echo the concerns of the other board members. I'm just not satisfied. I, I, I'm not comfortable putting my name on something where public safety is at risk. These are going to be 136 of our neighbors. And they're just not numbers for us. It's not, when I'm not talking economics, I'm not talking numbers, I'm talking real people. And I'm concerned with the single access. As apparatus go up the hill, have we made accommodations for people trying to leave the building? All right. And so if you, if you got a long fire truck trying to come around those bends while there's other cars trying to leave, there is, there doesn't appear to be much of a shoulder for these cars to pull over on. It's a problem. And I'm not prepared to sign off on something that I feel is inadequate. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, I, I concur with everyone else on the board with the egress, but one of the other things is too, that, I mean, the length of this driveway does exceed the zoning bylaw by quite a bit. And in the EPA, EPA's response there that they didn't even provide just justification for the non-conforming design element, nor does, nor did they address whether the, any alternative designs were considered.
Yeah, so we'll add that to our list of questions. Okay. John?
Yes, Sarah. Sorry, I must have cut off for something, but I, I was just, you know, thinking about a panic situation when, when there's a, a situation going on up the property and people are leaving in their cars and fire trucks are trying to come up. You know, and, and I acknowledge that there, you know, there are sprinklers and this will be built to code, but I, you know, e- even in my experience, in, in my career, I've seen a couple, you know, affordable housing projects burn to the ground. You know, a stick built within the last five years. And so this is something that is, you know, a concern for me. And so not to mention the fact that a lot of the parking is, you know, because this is frame podium over, frame over podium, that a lot of the parking is underneath. And it's just a very challenging tight spot up there to begin with. It's not, you know, an area that has a lot of, you know, parking set, set off the, the property structure. And I also want to comment, I don't know if you heard me before, but this is one building. This is not multiple buildings. So when something happens, everybody i- is impacted as a result of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point I will go to the fire chief and ask him to respond to issues raised by the board.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to start off with a few misconceptions. And then we'll move to the actual building. With respect to the fire at 132 Old Essex Road, the building was not a total loss. Snow was not an issue and did not play a factor in the fire at all. And the water supply for that was at a dead end main. It may have been six inches and over time may have been reduced to four, which created a water supply issue. Very different from what we're talking about. With respect to the University Lane Fire, that was before my tenure. But I've seen the video. I have read the reports. I've read the after action reports. I've spoken to the firefighters that were on scene. In that instance, the road had not been plowed or sufficiently plowed. Once again, it was old water mains that should have been one length, but over time, due to buildup in size, were much smaller and did not give the adequate flow that they needed. That single family home was not sprinkler. There was a delay in us getting the call. And as always, our staffing is at three, which creates an issue for us regardless of the size of the building, whether it's a single family home or an apartment building. So with respect to the proposed apartment building, the length of the road is not covered under the fire code. The fire code addresses the width of the road which they meet and the grade of the road which they also meet. It meets the turning radius for our largest apparatus all the way up to the turnaround by the parking garage. We talked about a fire lane in the front of the building, which allows us to pull up where we need to out of the way of traffic. By code, it's required to have state of the art fire alarm and carbon monoxide detection fully protected with a sprinkler system. Again, I talked about the road widths that we've already looked at. We've discussed fire hydrants. They understand that they need enough water and water pressure to handle domestic needs as well as engineered to provide adequate water for the sprinkler and standpipe systems. The snow removal maintenance plan is to guarantee the roads will be kept open with an approved plan so that we know it's not going to be two feet of snow before the first plow hits it. It would have to be maintained continuously so that we had access. There are currently no trees or wires that would be large enough or interfere or fall across the roadway or anything like that. It would all be new plantings. The median that they propose is only at the very bottom of the hill to separate the lanes, which gives us full width of the road to go up there to get to the building should there be an emergency. And with respect to addressing the proposed or the possible traffic nightmare of people evacuating the scene. I, I have been in the fire service for 40 years. If somebody's apartment building is on fire and they don't know the status of their apartment, they stand outside with all the other residents and wait to find out if their apartment's been involved. And then they go back inside. I have never had people run to their cars and flee their residence if they have people or property at stake inside a building. So I would not anticipate any type of traffic jam of some apocalyptic event that everybody's trying to leave the apartment parking lot at the same time. I have never seen that. I'm not saying it couldn't exist. But historically and anecdotally, I don't believe there's any facts to support that. In the fire service, we go based on the code. I've, I've met, as, as Mr. Angler had said, I've met with them three times. Their fire protection engineer knows all the calculations. We discussed the parking garage and additional standpipes have been added so that we could stretch hose lines into the garage should there be a car fire. We have water access on every floor. It will be an extremely safe building. And the code is designed to take human nature out of it and build the infrastructure that works automatically. The sprinklers work automatically and the fire alarms work automatically. That gives us early notification and allows us a quick response. And as you know, our station's right there on School Street. So nothing that they've prevented, presented is a glaring red flag. The fire code doesn't discuss the length of the road.
But you're referencing only the fire code. What about the ALS service? Is that covered in the fire code or?
No. No, I mean, i- if we can get a fire truck in, we can get an ambulance in. We have access problems with single family homes that have really small driveways. Or that, that the houses are set so far back, our stretcher has wheels. There's not been a place that we haven't been able to get to with a hose or that we haven't been able to get to a patient and get them out of a residence. But it does not address quote unquote ambulance access. But if the road's wide enough for a fire truck and it's being maintained in inclement weather, then our ambulance will be able to get there as well as the fire truck. And if there's concerns about people having heart attacks, then maybe you could work out to have some automatic external defibrillators placed throughout the building. But from a response point of view, the only issue we brought up initially, but it's an issue throughout the town, whether you build this building or not, is the amount of staffing we actually have. A single family home ties up our crew. An apartment building would tie up our crew. And that's why we rely on mutual aid. And for a building like that, we might be starting mutual aid sooner automatically. So that we have additional personnel coming on an additional fire alarm right from the get go. But I, I don't see those other things as being deal breakers from our response point of view or from the fire code point of view. And like I said in my letter, if they were able to put another road, sure, we'll take as many roads as we can. But I, I can't require that based on what I've seen.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Brian, did you have another comment? Your hands up.
Basically for the chief, you mentioned that the turning radiuses are all adequate for the apparatus that the town has. Does that take in consideration mutual aid and li, are there other bigger vehicles that might not be able to make that?
That, we, we went based on our ladder truck, which is the biggest, and they're, they're fairly standard sized. There may be five or six feet difference, but it, it's not going to be anything to the deal breaker. I'm not aware of anybody that we use for mutual aid that would have a Behemoth that couldn't get to that because they still need to be able to get those to locations that they're governed by the same fire code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I will ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this second egress situation. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Dan Hill, I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. I, I first wanted take exception to Mr. Angler's comment that the opponents of the project have raised this issue. I, I, in fact, I don't think I raised it. I don't think Mr. Legere raised it. The issue is being raised by board members, and I think it's a legitimate public safety concern. Comment was made that if the board required second access, it's the equivalent of a denial. I, I want to point out for the board that there was a project in, in Waltham back in 2005, a 40B project that was denied by the zoning board for unsafe access to the project. That denial was actually upheld by this Housing Appeals Committee. One of probably a handful of cases in the last 40 years where denial was upheld. And, and those facts are strikingly similar to, to the facts here. And I'm just quoting from the decision. Access to the development consists of, of one roadway approximately 1,000 feet in length. It winds upwards from Lexington Street, increasing in grade to 10% as it approaches the top of the hill and the area of the parking spaces for the proposed buildings on the site. It, it's interesting that this, this project, the road is actually 1,800 feet in length. It winds up a hill. Both sides of the road have steep grades, which I think is problematic, you know, just from a layperson's perspective. If this was a flat site, it might have been po, it might be possible for a fire vehicle or an ambulance to maneuver around a blockage in the road. That can't happen here because both sides of the, of the private driveway are steep grades. So if there is an obstruction in the road, whether it's a vehicle or a tree, whatever it is, I, I don't, I don't understand how an emergency vehicle can get around it. And I certainly am not questioning at all the dedication and ability of, of the town's public safety personnel to, to respond to emergencies. But I think that this presents real difficulties for, for public safety that are strikingly similar to a project that was denied in Waltham and upheld on appeal. So I'll provide the board with a copy of that decision after tonight's meeting. But I, I do, I do agree with the board members' concerns. And, and I think that you all should understand that your concerns are, are justified and have been, in fact, validated by even the State Housing Appeals Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Legere?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere McGregor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere McGregor, Legere and Stevens on behalf of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester, Manchester Affordable Housing. I'll be brief because I think that the board has really hit on a lot of the same thoughts and comments that I had and and Mr. Hill also just touched on several of them as well. This is a very legitimate issue. It directly ties to public health and safety. I think the board members were absolutely correct to, to identify all the different reasons for which you have very real and legitimate concerns around this. I likewise was troubled by Mr. Angler's trying to cast this as an issue that residents or opponents are raising when, when in fact, the only people who had raised it all were, were the board members. I think that sort of shows that he was giving not only short shrift to the board's legitimate concerns, but maybe had a rebuttal sort of ready to go that didn't quite fit the way Madam Chair has actually set up this hearing process where the, the public hadn't had a chance to comment. There have been a lot of comments from Mr. Angler and from the fire chief as well about the safety of the building. And Madam Chair, I believe it was you who correctly stated that that's not going to help someone who's having a heart attack. And I heard the fire chief say that there aren't any trees up there that could fall and block the roadway, for instance. And with all due respect, that may be true, but there are certainly other ways that this roadway could become blocked. There could be a car that spins out or crashes and blocks the roadway. In my experience, it is typical for boards to require secondary means of access for projects of this scale, even when the access is much more straightforward, shorter, flatter, much less problematic than what we're potentially seeing proposed here. So, you know, those really are my comments, Madam Chair. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Taylorman, would you please state your name and address?
Jay Taylorman of Mead, Taylorman and Costa. I represent the applicant here. And I, I just wanted to make a brief comment about recitation of case law. Here, I agree with Mr. Hill that the Waltham case is an important case that a board should take into consideration. However, here, I think the fire chief has spoken artfully about the means by which he can access the property. Moreover, I would point out that there's another case which I had the displeasure of losing on behalf of a community coming out of the town of Sunderland, which is probably much more applicable here and which has findings and conclusions that would support the fire chief's position in this case. We'll be happy to provide that. And I don't want to use this hearing to have a back and forth between lawyers because I don't think that's productive. This is fact gathering, but we'll make sure that you have the benefit of all the applicable cases.
Thank you. Gina Binecki, would you please state your name and address?
Thank you, Gina Binecki. My address is 3 Masconomo Street here in Manchester. And I just wanted to also reply to Mr. Angler when he said that that they simply can't fit a second access in. That second access is required. And I actually wanted to just speak to the nature of Manchester as a small town. I think we consistently undercut ourselves and don't stand up for ourselves as a small town. We've got a traffic issue at 128. We have access issues to this site. We're trying to shoehorn it into a hillside. And I just want to stand up to say there's a time that we as citizens are relying on you as a board to represent us as a community, not just represent the next person who wants to make a dollar. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think I will move on to the parking section.
Sarah, this is Catherine. Before you move on, can I make one comment?
You may.
Thanks. I don't think it's going to be too controversial. It's just, you know, the peer reviewer kindly pointed out a couple of areas where the applicant should provide justification. And one is with respect to the, you know, proposed single driveway and the non-conformance with the zoning bylaws. And I believe actually we asked the applicant for this in our last meeting, which was the kind of like a spreadsheet of all the waivers requested and their justifications for requesting those waivers. I don't know whether that has been received or not. I do know that we requested it at the last meeting. So, you know, it kind of just dovetails with the peer reviewers' comment here was whether alternative designs for the driveway were considered. That would be something that I would have expected the applicant to provide with what was requested at the last meeting with respect to waivers and why they're being requested. So.
Catherine, we did receive that and it was my understanding that Gail sent it out.
Okay.
It would have been maybe today.
And were alternative designs considered under that rubric?
It wasn't that as, that expansive.
Okay.
So I think we can still put it, this particular one on our list.
Yes, I will add it. Thank you.
Okay. Chief Clary, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up really, really quickly. I did read through the previous decisions in case law on probably four or five similar such projects as part of my due diligence when it was first brought through and read through the case law. The gentleman pointed out that the road wasn't as long, but it was a 10% grade. If this was a 10% grade, it would not meet fire code. And that would be the end of the story. But it's less than 10%, so it's within the bounds of the fire code. So I can't go above and beyond what the state has adopted for the fire code. So I just want to make that clear. They're not all the same. Every one of those cases has different nuances. So they don't exactly match up to this particular project. But I am aware they are out there. I'm aware of the other decisions. I'm aware of what the other chiefs have said. So nothing happens in a vacuum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Clary. Sarah Pierce, did you have something you wanted to say? Please state your name and address.
Yes, hi, Sarah Pierce, 9 Friends Street. I wanted to just make an overall comment and then I had a question that I think what seems to happen is we keep circling back to heavy traffic and lack of public service that could possibly service this fire if we needed to. And I think that the overall message that I keep hearing is this project is just way out of scale for this town. And it's huge. I don't know. I've done some research and I know that we can add to our affordable housing incrementally. This does not have to be the solution. I would also like to add that Mr. Taylorman, Jay Taylorman, just made a comment about case law and Mr. Taylorman was an attorney in another situation for, for a private citizens group for Manchester opposing a very similar 40B at 601 Summer Street. So at some point, I hope we have the ability to have the conversation as to why he thinks a project that is much larger than the one that he opposed with just as sensitive environmentally concerns, traffic concerns is on the table for approval versus denial. That is in the Town Hall record and I would ask the ZBA to request that and get all the records from the 601 Summer, Summer Hill project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hate to belabor these issues. I have a couple of questions for Chief Clary, though.
Okay.
Directed to you. You can read, you can ask the questions if you prefer, or I can ask the questions. I'm curious what would be considered a, a worst-case scenario to happen at this site? Where there would be more than a single or so injury, maybe even with firefighting personnel being injured with additional ambulance, EMTs. How, how do we look at that? We're talking about a single fire truck getting up there or a single ambulance getting up there. What if it was something really serious? And I know the building is supposed to be built according to code.
Sure.
Buildings. But how do you deal with that? And my second question for the fire chief is much simpler. In your letter, you mentioned some things and I'm just curious what they are. What is a Knox box?
Okay, well, I'll answer that first. That's the easiest thing. A Knox box is a box that a residence or a building, a business can buy. It's mounted to the exterior of the building that puts in access keys and swipe cards that only the fire department has access to. So if you were to have an emergency after hours or nobody was around, we can access your business or your residence with a key rather than having to force entering through a door or go in through a window. So those are available to citizens. They're available to businesses. And they come in multiple sizes, big enough for one key or big enough for 100 keys.
Thank you. The other one is similar, simpler. What is a BDA radio booster?
A BDA radio booster means if in the event we are, due to the construction and the construction materials, code says that our radios have to be able to transmit within the building and to the apparatus outside. If due to the steel and the concrete, we don't have the ability to transmit our radios, then a BDA is one method to do that, which is a radio booster, which then is within the building and then captures our radio signal and boosts it up and gives us another receiving point and then sends that radio transmission out to the other apparatus or to dispatch. So it overcompensates if, if the construction of the building interferes with radio transmission.
Who determines if it's necessary?
They have to do a study. We would go there and we would test our radios. And if the radios don't work, then you have to put it in. They just recently put one into the Memorial School. Due to the size of the building and the construction, fire and police need to be able to talk within the building. So that ended up needing to be put in there. So that's, that's how it's done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You can go on now to my more.
Sure. Worst-case scenario, we deal with what we have with the access we have. For example, the other night at 132 Old Essex Road, we had the ability to get one fire engine in the driveway, probably still 50 to 75 feet from the house. No ability to get our aerial ladder close. And all the rest of the apparatus had to line up on Old Essex Road and the crews come in by foot. And that's not uncommon. And it just depends on the lay of the land. We've had to do it with single-family homes with long driveways. The same way we would tie up all of, all of Central Street of Town Hall was on fire. So we get them in where we can and then we compensate past that. So there's no requirement to be able to accommodate a certain number of trucks, other than we have to have access for the biggest truck to get there. The other issue is there's no requirement for us to have 360-degree access to the building with a vehicle. It talks specifically about how far we have to be able to stretch our hose lines. We have to be able to get apparatus within, within 50 feet of the main entrance and hose line 450 feet to the other access points into the building. But that does not include additional stories. We overcome that with either ground ladders or aerial ladders or internal stairways. And in the internal stairways, that's where we have our standpipe system where all we have to do is bring our hose to the stairway and hook up. It's like a hydrant in the stairway. And that way we can use that hose on upper floors without having to run it all the way from the outside. And that gives us the firefighting capabilities above the first floor. And that's part of the building design requiring standpipes in conjunction with the sprinkler system.
Are you good, Jim?
Yes, for now. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your answer.
Catherine?
Yes, hi, Sarah. I just wanted to apologize. I just now received the waiver list. The applicant did submit it and Gail didn't, there was a mix up in communications. She didn't realize she was supposed to forward it to the board. So it had not been forwarded to the board and I just wanted to, you know, kind of correct the record here. He apparently did submit it. The full board didn't receive it, which is why I did not know it had been submitted. So apologies for any confusion there. I haven't reviewed it, but it's now in my inbox. So Mr. Angler admitted and I just wanted to clear that.
Thank you. Okay, we're not, we're not going to resolve these issues tonight. What we're trying to do is to identify additional information we need from the applicant. Okay? So I think at this point we have, I think we have a list of items we want with respect to the second egress and I think I'm going to move on to parking for now. I see your hand is up, Mr. Hill, but I'm going to move on to parking. I, I, I need to be able to come up with a list of additional information we need and we will have another meeting where we will take more input from the public. Okay?
I have a question for the fire chief, but that can wait.
Okay. With respect to parking, the members of the board, of the board have issues with respect to the nine feet by 18-foot size parking spaces in lieu of nine feet by 20 feet.
No comment, please.
I'm good.
Sarah, it's James. I don't have any, we've also discussed this in prior meetings and I think they've, they've met the requirement.
Jim?
Would Mr. Black just spend a minute to talk about, he said the ITE, I believe, the ITE specs dictated that we have sufficient parking. I want to make sure I understood him correctly.
I, I'm not going to, right now, I'm just talking about the nine foot by 18 foot space.
Excuse me.
And then we'll talk about the number of spaces.
I'm okay with the parking, size of the parking space.
Okay. Are you okay, Brian?
Yeah, I'm fine. I, yeah.
Catherine?
Reiterating, yes, fine with the size and spaces.
John?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay. So now we get to the point, I think we get to the point of the number of spaces and number of guest spaces. What additional information do we need with respect to this component?
Sarah, I would like to understand how many spaces are allocated for guests?
16?
Yeah, 16.
Okay.
I mean, it's my understanding that based on what we were provided with, that all of the spaces within the garage are for tenants and that there's only 16 spaces available for guests and deliveries and house cleaning services, which seems a little light to me personally.
I would agree with that, Sarah. I mean, you know, our town is a destination in the summertime and, you know, people have friends come over and they go to the beach. And so when you live in the apartment and you have friends visiting you over the weekend, I think, you know, out of 134 units, 16 guest spaces are pretty light. Also given the fact that, you know, each apartment, you know, tenant doesn't have two spaces for themselves.
Been near, it's been near.
Sarah, this is Sean.
Yes, Sean.
One of the things that I have about here is in the, in the response, they have in there a number of locations justifying their amount of spaces. But my question with that is, how, how do those numbers compare when there's not any kind of transit system close by?
Okay, so you want to put on the list a question. Okay, so you want to put on the list a question of these various properties and what type of location they're in and how far they are from transit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm sorry to interrupt here, but so I saw that list of properties. From what I understand, only three of them are actually built. Um, can someone confirm that?
Okay, well, we'll put that on the list. Yeah, okay.
Sarah, I've got a question, uh, and a comment, and this is uh, actually for Chief Fitzgerald. Uh, in as much as it seems like there won't be a lot, um, frankly, uh, the amount of parking that becomes a building management issue. They can, they'll fight it all out. It doesn't spill over into the town per se. Except for the fact that if the roadway itself is impacted by cars parking in the uh, in spaces, does the town have parking enforcement rights up on that private property?
Uh, I believe that according to the town bylaws, the only enforcement pa- power that we would have would be handicap parking. Similar to what we have at the uh, train station in Forty Beach area.
So there's nothing to, uh, if there is overflow parking, uh, either guests or even uh, tenants, uh, they're going to find a place to park and there's nothing the town can do about it if it's on the uh, access road or along the building.
That is my opinion. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So do you want to put something on our list, Brian, of asking for what the plan will be to make sure the parking is within designated spots?
Yes, because I I just don't think it's adequate. But again, for the most part, that's not my concern, except for if it affects uh, access.
Okay. Catherine?
I don't have anything right now.
James?
I think Brian's um, question was a very good one and I don't have anything additional to add. I do think the sixteen spaces is very light for visitor parking.
So we would want some type of explanation regarding how that sixteen spaces is adequate?
And where would the uh, overflow be parked if such a condition existed?
Okay. You getting this on your list, Catherine?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Okay. Jim?
I had asked earlier, uh, I believe Mr. Black mentioned an organization called ITE as developing um, specifications for how much parking should be provided. Um, I didn't fully understand his answer and um, to follow up on what John said, um, do they make these determinations based on the availability of public transportation or not? Because clearly there is no public transportation at the site. And so I think it's reasonable to assume that there would be more cars there, but that may not be a reasonable assumption. I'd like to hear what the experts have to say about that. Maybe it's a question.
I'll ask Mr. Lucas to respond to that.
Sure, I'd be happy to respond to that. The ITE, um, the Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes data um, in the same way that when they um, do trip generation for sites like this, determine how many trips, vehicle trips will be generated um, based on a similar site. It's based on comparable sites. Um, data collected from around the country. A similar process exists for parking. Data is collected from a number of residential sites to say, this is the available parking, this is the demand, this is the number of bedrooms, this is the number of units, and then aggregate that data to provide a ratio. And um, what was stated by um, the VAI response and confirmed in Mr. Black's comments was that the parking ratio um, exceeds, the parking ratio proposed, one point seven eight spaces per unit, exceeds um, those ITE calculations. Now to answer your other question, does that account for um, proximity to transit, et cetera? It is not. It's not that refined. And so that was the flavor of our comments was to ask for additional information specifically to the comparable sites provided um, to determine how comparable they truly are. Um, we, the, for each of those sites, we give units and spaces proposed. Well, how many bedrooms are comprised within those units? How uh, how proximate are they to transit? And I think that that will help us determine whether this data truly helps justify the ratio proposed. But based on the data provided from ITE, um, the ratio is, exceeds what what ITE predicts for demand of a similar site. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question and as you said, it does not take into account the availability of public transit.
Right.
And so um, I think our chairperson, this is something that we should follow up on and put on our list.
Right, so we'll put on the list the, to ask for on all the comparables provided, ask for the number of bedrooms and proximity to transport.
Thank you.
Does that cover it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, Sean, did you talk with respect to parking?
I did. I talked first there.
Okay. So is there, are there any other concerns by the board with respect to parking? Except that we need more information to figure it out. Okay, so Catherine, can we go through your list?
Yes, we can. It is a little messy, but I'm going to do my best here. So you want me to go from uh, the end or the beginning, like from the beginning of the meeting or from what we just left off on?
Doesn't matter. Just, let's just go through the whole list and see what's on it.
Um, originally, we had, it seemed like the board was in favor of requesting a summer transport analysis. Um, we got some feedback that that might be an unusual request. So I don't know where we stand now, but that is on the list of requests, a summer transport analysis.
Okay. And impact on the beach, right?
Yeah, impact on, well, yeah. It meant on the beach and the roads, like the beach parking, but also the the roadway, like the highway on and off, getting to.
Okay.
Um, similarly, I had next MBTA parking analysis and whether mitigation would be required. Um, and then our um, peer reviewer had weighed in that a meaningful analysis would be difficult, but MBTA could perhaps provide data that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, um. Next, I have just sort of generally with respect to some of these um, mitigation improvements um, that we would request um, a study to identify improvement, uh, minimum improvements that are specific and what those would cost. And then um, a a commitment to funding of a proportionate share of the cost of those mitigation improvements on traffic.
Next?
Next, something that says whether we received the waiver justifications. I'm just going to uh, assume that we did. I haven't reviewed them to see whether they're um, sufficient, but we did receive them, so that's fine. Um, next is the comparative of the um, other properties with the parking and um, proximity to public transportation, whether those are actual comparables or not, um, and whether they have been built. In, are are they actually existing properties or are they just conceptual plans?
And so that's when we're asking for the number of bedrooms and
Yes.
proximity to transportation.
Right.
I thought we had, um.
Uh, it's James. We did have one more and it was with respect to alternative designs or study about a second egress roadway.
Yes, it's on my list. I hadn't finished my list. Thank you, James. In accord.
I thought you were going in order.
Well, no. I'm going in order of what I can read on my handwriting here, so, but no. Yes, you're right, that. And also we needed an explanation for the sixteen spaces. And like how that would be adequate for the number, sixteen guest spaces and where any overflow would go, um, meaning, you know, sort of uh, and else that it would not impact the public. The overflow wouldn't end up being on School Street, in other words. So explanations for the adequacy of the sixteen spaces and where would any potential overflow go? That's what I have so far, Sarah. I actually have a couple more requests of my own, but um, that's what I have so far.
I I thought we were going to ask for um, an explanation of the reason, the the need for the um, length of the road.
Um, okay, yes, that is what I, that was included, sorry, in my list of like waiver requests and their explanations. Because I, I didn't actually review the waiver request explanations that came in, so I don't know if they're there or not.
It's not.
Okay, so then we need that.
Okay. And what else did you want to add?
Oh, um, I have some stuff that we haven't necessarily gotten to yet, um, which is with respect to the sidewalks.
Okay.
And so, um, did you want me to go there or no?
Yeah, you can raise a sidewalk.
Okay, so I have some concerns. Um, you know, we have, you know, received an opinion that um, ADA accessible um, sidewalk connections are required from this community to the public sidewalks and we have a commitment from our Board of Selection that they would build public sidewalks should this development occur. Um, you know, and I have some real concerns. Um, I have school age kids. This is within, I believe, within the radius with with, within which kids would not necessarily be provided a bus and therefore they would bike or walk to school. Um, and so if these are apartments that are going to house kids and disabled people, but you know, I I think about the kids, you know, we need sidewalks. They can't be biking along what currently exists um, to school. That's just unreasonable. Or walking. It gets dark at four o'clock here in the winter, so you know, not just the accessibility of the route and a possibility of a bike lane or a sidewalk, but there needs to be adequate lighting there. Um, for everyone, but you know, I have a, I have a focus on school kids, but for anyone that really wants to go there and for 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 the ma- members of the public that aren't familiar with this, we do have an opinion um, stating that ADA accessible sidewalks are required here under the mask regulations and we um, I I don't believe we have any commitment from the applicant to provide those.
Yeah, so um, I think that the police chief has recommended that we also include motion activated pedestrian crosswalks across School Street and across the one twenty-eight ramps. And the, the Board of Selectmen did vote Monday night to reaffirm their intention to extend the sidewalk on School Street if any development is built north of one twenty-eight. And therefore, it's my understanding that the Architectural Access Board opined that if the town extends the sidewalk on School Street, any property, any development up there would require an ADA accessible sidewalk down to School Street to join in with the towns street.
Excuse me, Sarah?
Yes, Brian.
Uh, Brian, uh, are we even empowered to waive a state or federal requirement?
No, but we can make it a condition.
Now, I'm just curious as how we can just decide that the state mandate doesn't uh, affect, you know, we have the ability to waive that. Okay, thank you.
Can I weigh in on that, Sarah? Do you mind?
Yes, Mr. Hoochie, please.
And and I I as you see, I I only weigh in without wa- raising my hand if if it's necessary. And this issue came up and I um, you know, before and I I read the letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts um, on that uh, sidewalk issue. And I I did want to just address that uh, it's an issue of such importance and and you remember Brian had just um, referred to it, you know, can you even waive that? So I wanted to note a couple of things on that is your permit, in the event you granted a permit with conditions, that's in the event you did that as opposed to a denial, your your permit would be subject to state and federal regulations without you spelling them out. You would have to comply with those uh, or the applicant would. But down the line, you wouldn't necessarily have enforcement ability. Say you don't specify a condition in your permit and it ends up being, you know, that they don't comply with other requirements, you really have no enforcement authority over it. The letter that you received from the Commonwealth, in my opinion, I don't see, i- if you were to ask me, counsel tell us, you know, are we compelled to to impose this condition? My opinion would be yes. I I don't see how you could reasonably not impose the condition that the state has definitively stated to you would be a requirement in accordance with the accessibility regulations. So the the only reason I'm I'm weighing in on this now is you really need an answer from this, on this, from the applicant, because you know, you don't want to wait till you're far enough along the process and then find out, well, we're never going to see a revised plan with with a sidewalk or anything like that. So it it would be good to you know, on on um, you know, the the list of follow-up items that that you're recording, you definitely need a definitive answer on this uh, from the applicant, because um, you know, my recommendation to you would be absolutely you should impose that as a condition in the event of a um, you know, conditions of approval. And if that requires, you know, you looking at a plan or possible alterations to the site plan as proposed, you want to know that now and get the applicant's answer and get those, you know, get that depicted in the in the plans before you. Um, you know, if the board is inclined that, oh, well, we don't know if we're going to impose that condition or not, that's one thing, but if the general consensus is, and again, I would recommend you impose that condition in the event of an approval. If that's generally the consensus, you you really want to get an answer from the applicant so that there's time to, you know, look at a plan that incorporates that sidewalk. Uh, so that that's the only thing that I would note. I would definitely put that on your list of uh, follow-up issues. And then, you know, you're going to have to decide how to deal with that. If the applicant says, no way, I'm not going to uh, comply with that condition. I'm not going to provide you any updated plans with that sidewalk depicted.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, would you like to speak to the sidewalk issue?
Uh, we're listening to everything that's saying, I respectfully, I need to confer with my team. Uh, that letter, we have reason to believe that, first of all, we have reason to believe the state wasn't provided all the information when they provided that. Secondly, we've looked at School Street and and you think the environmental groups in the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust doesn't like our project, wait till they see what's required to put a sidewalk in on School Street relative to proximity to bernal pools, relative to alteration of wetlands, relative to. resource area. There's not gonna be a sidewalk put in that area without all of those things happening, so. Will we look at that? Yeah, we'll look at it. May we consider a condition that we would put in a sidewalk conditional on sidewalks being installed on School Street? We would put a sidewalk on our site. I need to talk to my technical team about that, but I I cannot provide a definitive answer this evening on that issue.
Um, what would be the timeframe for getting a response?
No, within the next thirty days.
So what's your reaction to the other items we've listed?
Well, first, can respectfully, can Catherine or somebody at the town after this hearing, I mean, I don't mean tonight, obviously. But provide me in writing with that list, the cleaned up version. I mean, I've taken notes, but it will be helpful. So we have a written record and we're all on the same page. Jeff, my traffic consultant is is on the call, is on the Zoom. Before I talk, Jeff, I'm wondering if you had any comments about anything that was discussed tonight or perspective on on any of the things either shared by Mr. Lucas or Mr. Black or or the members for that matter.
Um, well, first of all, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk, the managing partner with the Nessen Associates. We we very much appreciate the comments that we've heard tonight. We appreciate the professional review that was undertaken by the board's consultant. We've certainly, as you've heard, strive to answer all of the questions that have been asked for us and and I think, you know, what you've heard from your consultant is that we've addressed all of the technical questions. And and I think that's very important as we're looking at this and I and I think the the questions the board has in the list that you've raised tonight. Certainly, we'll address each and every one of those items that you've asked, and again, we appreciate that. At the end of the day, the technical analyses that have been presented are sound. And I think you've heard that from Mr. Black, who I believe is representing the Butters, but also from you. So I think it's important you hear it from your consultant as well. So I I think we're at a place where the board's poking and prodding around the edges on the project, and I think that's the correct thing to do. Uh, we will provide answers to all of the questions that are asked. Um, and hopefully that'll help you with making your decision on the project, but there's nothing that's been asked by the board or your consultants that is things that we would consider unreasonable that we can't provide responses to. So I I think that's important. So we thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so so Madam Chair, what what I might recommend then is, you know, if we get the written request, we can embed responses directly in that request for the ease of convenience of the board of following along.
Okay.
So and we'll endeavor to work on that right away as soon as we receive that. So that 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 really ties to, I guess, weekend slash summer trips and impact. I'll have to talk to Jeff about, I mean, impact on the beach, MBTA research, that's all anecdotal. And that is, I think, Mr. Black and Mr. Lucas would have have opined that that's really outside of a normal traffic study. You know, I'll talk to Jeff about what we might be able to provide, but I I mean, I I don't think that's that that's not gonna move the needle on the decision of this board, in my opinion, but we'll see what we can do. Respectfully to the member who's heard that only three of the projects have been built on the list that we provided, I don't know where that information came from. They're they're either built or under construction. So whether or not they're under construction or, I mean, the the ratio is the ratio. So, uh, and I can also indicate not the reason those were selected is because they're not close to the MBTA or mass transit. I mean, we certainly can easily provide distances to the nearest, whether it be subway or commuter rail station or the like. If if the board is uncomfortable with sixteen guest spaces. I'm sure we can figure out a condition where overflow could be accommodated in the parking lot. Listen, I I talk, this is my business. All right, 1.8 for 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 this kind of property is so high. I've talked to two of my colleagues who two are the most professional and and, you know, prolific developers in eastern Massachusetts, and they thought I was crazy providing 1.8 knowing where the site is. So we we we're gonna have more parking than we know what to do with. So if we need to provide a few spaces in the garage, you know, we can accommodate that. Moreover, the board can can issue a condition that there's absolutely no parking at any time on the on the driveway. Uh, and we will be forced to adhere to that. Moreover, as the, you know, our property management company, we don't want parking there. So we can tow people and it'll be clear. So that that's easily handled in the in this decision. Uh, so that addresses both operationally and functionally relative to the ability to to travel along that lane for the entirety of the roadway. Also, with regard to the length, we we certainly will provide a narrative. I mean, trust me, we looked at the site extensively and in great meticulous detail. So we'll provide a narrative on how we arrived at the roadway we did and why it works and why it was chosen and why other ways don't work. And we'll put it in terms that people can understand. Uh, in that regard, you'll notice there is no waiver request for the length of the roadway because it's not a road. It's a driveway. So we don't need a waiver from the zoning board on the length of of our driveway. There's nothing. I believe there may be something in the subdivision rules and regs, but we're not a subdivision, so that doesn't apply to us. So we don't need a waiver on the length of our internal driveway. It's not a public road. It's a private driveway. We did submit a waiver list showing the explanations of why we need the waivers. There are some wetlands waivers that we need to do likewise. But we're in the process of evaluating the plan and look forward to Beals and Thomas's review, and I I think some of those waivers actually will not be necessary. So that's why we haven't submitted on on those waiver requests, but we will do so immediately after Beal and Thomas's. As, I mean, the waivers have been submitted for the record. We just have not provided the full rationale, if you will, if the zoning board requested, just on those particular waivers. So relative to, so relative to the parking, yeah, we can provide some some supporting data on other projects. Honestly, it's easy to find projects in eastern Massachusetts that have been built in the last fifteen years that have lower parking ratios. I mean, I know it's not the responsibility of Mr. Lucas or Mr. Black. I I would ask them to find a a project hundred year, greater than a hundred units that has a higher ratio than what we've provided.
And you know, Mr. Angler, we've just asked you to give us an explanation.
Apologies. So we we will do that and we'll look at the sidewalk issue. Um, I don't think there's, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. We'll send.
Oh, wait, wait. Yes, there's a big one. There's a big one. So what we're proposing to do, and this is important, is put together a list of the potential mitigation with the baseline of what those costs are. Because otherwise, the the zoning board in the town is flying blind. You know, one item might be a hundred thousand dollars, one item might be five hundred thousand dollars. Our traffic engineer, Benassen Associates, environmental partners, and I certainly know Mr. Black, working for VHB as long as he does, has a lot of experience. Obviously, we're not gonna go out to bid with these projects. But we can provide a rough order magnitude on on what all these things will cost. And then it's just math relative to what a fair share contribution would be to addressing those issues. Um, so we will endeavor to provide that baseline for the town. The town can then share it with its peer reviewer to say, yeah, there's no way you can do that project for two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand or whatever, or and we'll be conservative. We're not gonna be frugal in this regard and and our consultant and the town's consultant can review that and and come to an agreement as they have on all these other issues that this is within reason. And then we can back into what a reasonable fair share contribution would be. So you have very specific you know, dollar amounts that you can that you can work from and and discuss. So I I think, I mean, ultimately, I think that's all the all the things that have been talked about tonight. I think that's the most important one or one of the most important ones as it relates to this board and and ultimately the decision. So I think that's that's I think that's everything. If I if I missed anything or somebody has any questions, I'd be happy to to answer it.
And what's the timeline timeline for developing that baseline?
Uh, I I don't, I I think a couple of weeks. I don't think it's a it's a long lead time item. I'll talk to to Mr. Dirk tomorrow about that. We'll 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 endeavor to produce something, we'll submit it to the to the board and the board can order it on to its consultant who can look at it and opine on the numbers and and we can go from there.
Um, now, I do have a concern regarding the sidewalk and the fact that it could take thirty days to develop a plan and it would seem to me that might impact things like environmental and engineering peer reviews. So I'm concerned about impacting our overall.
Yeah. I I understand the point. I I would say it would impact it minimally. I mean, we're not, we we would not be moving the road like to a new part of the site. We would not be moving the building footprint. We would not be, it would it would be minor changes that would have minor impacts to the work that Beal and Thomas is doing. So while they may need to quote unquote, update their analysis. Theoretically, if we were to include a sidewalk, which I'm not committing to. I I don't think that would be a big undertaking for Beal and Thomas to to look at, to look at the impact because it would be it would be it would be minor within the grand context of everything they're looking at.
Mr. Pucci, do you think it would be reasonable to request an extension?
Yes, it it would be good to do that now to sort of get some repose, you know, on that issue because, as I noted at the beginning of this session. Can you hear me okay? Because I went off of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, bear with me one, oh. I shut myself off. That's probably a good idea. Yeah, as I said at the beginning of of the the session, you know, you're just getting into really substantive discussions now, uh, which is great, and you've got the peer review process well underway and you have a plan for completion and as you as you saw from from this substantive discussion you had tonight. You know, based on issues raised on the peer review, the applicant's response, the public input, third party reviewers input. You know, you always have further follow up questions and issues. It requires more time. So just think this through about you you've got a myriad of issues coming up. There's gonna be a big, you know, discussion related to environmental issues, you know, the site engineering architecture you haven't even gotten to yet. So all those potentially also have, you know, spillover issues and comments and you go over to other sessions. So it would be nice to sort of know now, kind of project out a little bit, maybe a ninety day extension now, you know, and and everybody agree to a date certain by which we're thinking, you know, okay. The now we're we're thinking of this timeline and and we have all these issues to address and we think we we can reasonably do that. And keep in mind, you know, you you want to be able to discuss waiver requests and potential conditions while the public hearing is still open so that you could still get input from the applicant on that. So you don't want to have to rush the close of the hearing either. You'll have forty days to issue a decision following the close of the hearing. But it's always useful to have, you know, public hearing sessions open so that you can answer, you know, have further questions and issues answered while that's still open because you you can't do that once the public hearing is closed. So I definitely think it's a reasonable time to raise that issue now and just thinking about it realistically. I think you're gonna need more time.
Mr. Angler, what are your thoughts on that?
I I I appreciate Mr. Pucci's comments. My my thoughts are the I I need to confer with counsel, but I don't think the close of the hearing is until May or sometime in May.
May twenty four, May, May twenty four.
We have a ton of time and I'll I'll consider an extension later on in the process, but I think we have a lot of work and a lot of information to receive. So I I'm not ready to grant an extension with three plus months left in the process. So, you know, you you can talk to many, many boards and other projects I've worked on on those that have been worked collaboratively. I've frequently given extensions, but for instance, if the board were to require a second means of egress, why would I give an extension when I know that's what the board is gonna request? Because that's an impossibility and I'll need to appeal. So there's no purpose in me giving a ninety day extension when there's gonna be a condition issued that I can't live with. So we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of things to talk about. You know, we'll see what Beals and Thomas does. We have every confidence we're gonna be able to close out this these traffic considerations, you know, in the next thirty to sixty days at the most. So let's let's see how the process unfolds. I I can give an extension up until May twenty third. So we have plenty of time. I'm not closing the door on it, but I'm I'm not gonna grant that this evening respectfully.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, did you have something?
Yes, this is probably more procedural and I saw that Mr. Fetishfield was on for a while. I saw that Mr. Wilson was on earlier as well. Not that I'm inclined to spend any town money. Can we spend town money without going to town meeting? How much money can we spend for paying our fair share of mitigation?
No, no, no. That's what the applicant's paying.
Well, he's also claiming, I mean, we're gonna have to, depending on what our fair share of any kind of.
No, no. So I I think that we don't need to discuss that tonight. The issue is is that the applicant would suggest a mitigation package. Additional costs to the town. At that point in time, we would discuss what it is and what the impact to the town is.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just note too, Sarah, is that you're you you wouldn't, the town wouldn't be bound by it.
Right.
Now, there is if if concepts are presented and cost estimates. You can go ahead and, you know, condition a proportionate share of that. The town is not bound to go ahead with, you know, spending, say, seventy five percent to do that. It would still be subject to that. So it would be an enforceable condition, but it wouldn't necessarily mean that the stuff even ends up getting built.
We've given lots of mitigation to towns and for whatever reason they didn't move forward with the project or they realized it wasn't essential and that money, you know, went into general coffers or wherever. So you your counsel is exactly right. It'd be our obligation to make our contribution what the town choose to do do with that ultimately, or whether the town funds or doesn't fund those projects. It's really at the discretion of the town.
Thank you. Catherine?
Thanks, Sarah. I just um, this may be a question for Mr. Pucci, but it is actually also one of Mr. Angler's points, which, you know, I think there are a couple of to me, there are a couple of flashpoint issues here. Second means of egress in the ADA compliant sidewalk. Um, and if these are are conditions that the board is absolutely going to require. Um, and I believe with at least with respect to the sidewalk, Mr. Pucci has recommended that we we follow the Um and I believe with at least with respect to the sidewalk, Mr. Pucci has recommended that we we follow the. Letter we received and do do implement that as a condition. So if these are conditions that we're going to require. And Mr. Engler is going to decline to provide. Then can't we all save a lot of time and money by voting on this sooner rather than later?
No, I don't think so. I think that he's got to, he has said he needs thirty days to decide what he's going to do about the sidewalk.
Thirty days. Okay.
Right, that I I need, I need, I don't need thirty minutes to decide what I'm going to do about the second means of egress.
Oh, I didn't ask you to vote now, Mr.
No, I understand. I I think your point is excellent. I agree with what you're saying a thousand percent. There are going to be some flashpoint issues and if the board feels very strongly about that. There, you know, I'm not going to be inclined to make uh an extension because. It it, I'm going to be in an appeal whether we agree on all the other issues. If I can't live with that condition, it it it. It it can't be met. So we we have time to talk about those things and we're. You know, the Beals and Thomas has a big scope that they have to undertake and there's going to be a lot to chew on there. So let let's get through that. Um. I, as I said, I think we're close on traffic, the sidewalk issue notwithstanding. And and, you know, let's keep the process moving.
Sarah, can I just weigh in? I I see hands raised. I and I just want to weigh in. I I just want to respectfully remind the applicant. He's been doing a great job of following your lead and answering things as you've opened the floor to him, but. It would be very good if he refrained from kind of a back and forth like Catherine had just kind of. Noted a discussion point, a question to you, and he kind of weighed in and. It would be good if he could refrain from doing that and just follow your lead. Everything goes through the chair.
I apologize.
And and I just wanted to say to to uh through you, Madam Chair, to Catherine's question. So i- if the applicant is going to end up, say, and and you haven't voted yet about what you're going to require. Regarding a second means of access and egress. So it it's up for discussion. So. If the applicant has made clear to you, well, look, I'm going to appeal that. No way, no how, even if I'm perfectly satisfied with every other thing you did with the project. I would appeal that if that was part of a condition of approval. You still want to complete as much as you can. While the public hearing is still open on all these other issues. You you have so many big issues of importance. Uh coming down the line to be discussed. So I I would respectfully recommend against. E- even though, you know, you you think there's a ninety percent chance from the applicant that that's a deal breaker for him. You still want to use the, and and he's not going to extend your public hearing period any longer. You still want to use the time that you have to address as many issues as you can that are before you. And address them and make and get evidence and establish a record. Uh because, you know, if you end up on an appeal. You don't want the Housing Appeals Committee to be fully your permitting authority that's going to make up. You know, permit conditions that you never had a chance to even look at the evidence on those. So however you come down on that uh issue about the second means of access and egress. I I do recommend that you cover as much as you can. Uh substantively, while you have the public hearing open, try to address as many issues as you can and then you're you're going to have a strong evidentiary record. Uh in the event of appeal and and hopefully down the line, the applicant would be cooperative. In granting, you know, the the further time that you would need if you end up with substantive questions you still would like to have uh further hearing time on.
Thank you. Um, one other issue I wanted to cover and that is. We've made requests um for some items, information in the past, which we have. Not yet received. Um and I would just like to go through that list. Um and one is the um test pit boring logs. Um. I read the geotechnical report written by Miller Engineering and Testing Inc. Dated July twenty ninth, twenty twenty. And in appendix one. There were sections regarding soil. Types and water levels and both of them referred to boring logs. Um and it referred the reader to the boring log. So I think, Mr. Engler, those are the logs we're looking for. Is the boring logs that were referenced in that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I I understand the confusion on that issue and maybe the the reference was not clear. Those logs are where where, how would I describe it? Informal. They're not the typical logs that Beals and Thomas would expect. Recognizing that, I've commissioned um my civil engineer. Listen, the site is difficult to access. Everybody that's been out there knows that. But we're at a great expense going to go back out and do more test pits. And we will submit that. However, and we're doing that because it's been requested. I've been involved in other forty Bs where the test pit requirements were a condition of the the conpermit. But, you know, I don't expect the board to do that here because it's an area uh of of interest. So we'll do it. We'll submit it and Beals and Thomas will have the opportunity to review it, but I honestly don't think it's going to change our design at all. But I understand the interest in having that information. So um we're hoping to conduct that field work next week.
Okay, thank you.
But we're not withhold, I want to make it clear, we're not withholding or sitting on. You know, formal test pit logs and just not submitting it. We don't have them. We we did some some, we we were out many months ago. We did some testing. We had an excavator out there. Um David Formato uh viewed all the 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 information in preparation of our. Utility plan, um but it it's not to the level that probably Beals and Thomas or I know Attorney Hill would like to see. So. We're going to be providing that in the near future.
Thank you. Um, the other item was you provided us with. A certification you made to mass housing regarding. The submission you made to mass housing. We had asked you to provide us with a certification. Of the application you made to us since you indicated the applications were different because of a different requirement.
Uh I I actually honestly would defer to Mr. Pucci and my counsel on that. I know they. Had a discussion. I I don't know what the conclusion was, but um I I mean. So I I would defer to to your counsel on on what he heard from my counsel.
Sarah, I can update you on that. I I did have, I I contacted um. Counsel, not not Jay Talon, but his um partner, um Adam Costa and. I um followed up on the issue and I I specified the further certification that you would be looking for. And um I offered to provide, you know, a. Proposed format uh if they were agreeable to providing that. Um I I know it's a very busy time of year, so maybe he. You know, missed that or didn't have a chance to respond to that, but it's all the the letter.
Madam Chair, um we'll get that addressed. I'll I'll make sure my counsel. Speaks to Mr. Pucci and we'll what what we'll get him what he finds satisfactory. That's not a, that's not a, I'm not concerned about that. I'll be glad to provide it.
Thank you. And then the the final thing was, um, we had requested. A comfor- confirmation that the property lines in the surveys. Did not change from the initial survey to the one submitted with the application.
We provided that, Madam Chair, respectfully, maybe six weeks ago. We provided an explanation about the survey that was submitted for the record.
Thank you.
If if for some reason, you know, the it was, I I I think if you ask. Uh the planning department, but if for some reason it it gone missing or whatever, we can submit it again. We we prepared something.
Thank you. I'll follow up on my end.
Sarah, this is Catherine. Like a little addendum to your follow up there. Um and I and I heard Mr. Engler's comment and, you know. I respectfully would thank him through you, um Sarah, for his willingness to redo um a more formal industry standard test pit log, but. Uh my question would be, could we get copies of those sort of informal data logs or whatever they originally did? Um. Could we get copies of the original informal logs?
Uh let me talk to my team about that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, it's nine forty-five. We're supposed to be discuss discussing and selecting the architectural peer reviewer. Are we prepared to do that tonight or do we want to defer it to the next meeting?
I am, Sarah. This is John.
Hi, John.
Sarah, I'm I'm ready to make a recommendation. There were just two, right?
Correct.
Yes, I'm ready if if the rest of the board is.
I'm fine, Sarah.
Okay. So what are the thoughts?
Um, I can go first, Sarah. I I would like to recommend Davis Square Architects. I I just think that um they have more experience just judging by the background. Information in the package. I'm also like familiar with them. Um they have a strong presence. Uh in in this area, uh not that the other entity does does not, but um. You know, just judging from the whole overall package, I'd like to recommend them.
Okay. Catherine?
Um, I concur with what with what John just said. I I that was my first pick as well.
James?
It's James, if I might weigh in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I thought the proposals from both were were both um very good. I and I admit to being perhaps swayed a little bit. By the exceptional graphic presentation that Spalding Tagheus did. Or has done on previous projects with um massing studies and contextual elements that really show the impact of a project. Some of the concerns um many residents have had about. The appropriateness of the building, the size, uh the the scale and character of how it fits into the community. I think that the uh Spalding Tagheus presentation uh addresses that extremely well. Having said that, I do think these are equal in terms of overall capabilities and. I don't want to be in a minority if if it's a case of uh choosing one over the other. Uh but my initial response was uh a slight preference for Spalding Tagheus.
John?
Sarah, I don't, um. I don't have any really um. Experience with either one of them. I mean, they both, I think, presented very well. Um I do, I was also, it's like James, kind of leaning towards Spalding.
Okay. Jim Deeter? Jim Deeter, are you on?
He was muted.
Oh.
I muted myself, Sarah. I apologize. It's too much background noise. Um I uh. I feel that I I don't have enough information to really make that decision, but I'm willing to support the decision. The comments that John Benares made. He's much more qualified in this area than I am and I would be, I think, I would be happy to go with his recommendation.
Okay, uh Brian?
Well, I'm conflicted. Uh I like, uh I was, I was leaning towards uh. Uh Davis as as and John made some uh good points, but I I really, I think that uh James is uh. Brought to light the concerns about massing and uh better satisfying uh. The questions that the community would have. But uh at this point, um if if Davis can address those as well. Then um either one works for me.
I I think we should just ask Davis to add a a massing study into their report. They can certainly achieve that.
Okay.
Sarah, there was one other thing with respect to cost. Um Spalding Tagheus was suggesting a estimate between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. And that item, in the scope of services, items one through four, the preliminary stuff would take four weeks. And um. The Davis proposal, he said he'd do it in three weeks. Uh his proposal was a a figure of an estimate of eleven thousand dollars. But his fee was some two hundred and fifty dollars an hour versus Spalding's at one ninety. So there's a little bit of disparity there. I think in the end, these are all going to be essentially uh. Time and materials kind of proposals. So in the end, it may not make a a large degree of separation between the cost, the final cost between either proposal. But I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay. So it seems like. Majority leaning towards Davis Square. I think, I mean, I certainly. Would defer to John if he's got experience with Davis Square.
I I don't have any personal relationships there. I've just worked on projects where they were the architect of record, but. I mean, what sold me here is that, you know, they've worked on more than forty, you know, forty B projects over the last six years. And they worked on the the one that we have have currently constructed in our downtown. So they have intimate.
That's right, yeah.
They're familiar with our with our town. So, I mean. Whereas in the other proposal, I think Ken made a statement that. You know, she has experience on forty B because she's on the planning board in her town. I I I didn't get the sense that they had as an architecture firm experience with a lot of these forty B projects. I might be wrong, but that's just the. What my gut told me.
Yeah, it seemed like it was more mixed juice. Um multifamily mixed juice, not necessarily forty B.
Sarah, if we could just, uh again, as as John pointed out. Uh ask for the massing study from Davis. I think that would probably cross all the Ts and dot all the Is that we're looking for at this point.
Okay, so do I have a motion that we approve Davis Square as the architect peer review?
It, James?
I move to approve um as the architect for peer review if they include the massing study, I think is the motion, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Oh, and I think we have to request um. Mr. Engler to. Submit the eleven thousand into. Um, I'll take a roll call vote. Brian?
Yes, uh Davis.
Okay. John?
Approve.
James?
Approve for Davis with the uh provision of the massing um diagrams.
John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Jim?
Approve with the previous conditions that you.
And Sarah approves. Okay.
Mad Madam Chair, can I make one point? I just want to for through through you to the member. Uh I was just texted, the text, the 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 test pit log information that we do have was included in the geotechnical report that was submitted. So anything we have was included in that report. And and to reiterate, we are going out to the field to do additional testing, which will be submitted.
Okay, and um the additional testing you're doing, is there a timeframe attached to that when?
I I, it doesn't take long to turn the logs around. I would, we're we're endeavoring to get the excavator out on the site next week.
Okay.
I I'll keep the board posted.
Okay. Okay. Um, now we get to. Scheduling of the next meeting. Um, originally, we were going to have. The meeting. A meeting on February twenty-third. Um, it's my understanding that. Beals and Thomas is not going to be. Beals and Thomas is not gonna be, it was gonna be to do the preliminary peer review on the environmental and engineering. It's my understanding they're not gonna be ready um by February twenty-third, and they're suggesting. March ninth. Um. So I'm wondering, is there anything else that the board feels I'd like to cover on February twenty-third, or do we not hold that meeting?
Ma- Madam Chair, just for the record.
Yes.
That school vacation week, I presume it's that in Manchester. I I'm I'm not gonna be around that night. That's not to say I couldn't. Designate somebody to attend if necessary, but I would imagine. Some members of the board and possibly members of the public aren't gonna be available, considering Beals and Thomas won't be ready. Um, you know, we we certainly will submit information for the record. When it's available and ASAP, but uh March ninth, I think would, you know, work work better, but I'd certainly defer to your judgment.
Yeah, Sarah, I I agree with Mr. Engler. I will be traveling for work uh that week. Um so. Um if we could do March, that'd be better.
Okay.
Thanks.
Catherine, are you available on March ninth?
Uh, yes, I believe that I am more available than I am during school vacation week, so yes.
Okay, so that's, and James?
Some available.
And Jim?
March ninth is fine.
Okay.
And Sarah, I'm available too.
Oh, sorry, Brian.
Okay, I I feel left out too.
Oh, Sean!
It's late.
You okay for the night?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So I move to continue the public hearing on the forty B application, Jeffrey Engler, VSLV School Street LLC. Um. To be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Master and Law's Chapter Forty B, Sections twenty to twenty-three. To construct a hundred and thirty-six unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision. On September sixteen, twenty-twenty-one at School Street, assesses map number forty-three, lot number eighteen. Filled with the town clerk on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. To March ninth. Twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Um. With the intention to discuss the preliminary peer review from Beals and Thomas on environmental and engineer. Do I have a second? Ezra?
Do you also wanna include in the agenda the follow-up from today's meeting, those information you're getting on?
Yeah, I I was just trying to do the major.
Sure.
Component so that members of the public knew the the major thrust of the meeting. Thank you. Um. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, second. I'll take a roll call vote and hope I get everyone. Ryan?
Excuse Madam Chair, may I? I terribly started her up. I just have a very quick. Question that I think the board may want to consider adding to the list of questions that you're preparing for the applicant. It's related to traffic.
What's your question?
Well, it just, it earlier, I believe I heard Mr. Engler say that he uh. They had not applied for a waiver from the five-hundred-foot common driveway requirement because they're a driveway, not a road. Um it might, it had been my understanding that that five-hundred-foot requirement that we've been having a lot of discussion tonight about being, you know, exceeded by more than three times is for common driveways. So it's.
I'm not gonna have, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna have the discussion. We've asked him for an explanation. Of the reasoning for the length of the road.
Okay, I was just thinking it might be good to know why they don't think they need a waiver as well. Thank you.
No, I'm not, no. Um. A roll call vote. Ryan?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
And Catherine? Catherine? Sarah approves.
I've been approved by text.
Um. So we're gonna move on to administrative matters. Um. We don't have any minutes to review because Gail sent them to me and I didn't forward them on. Um. So we'll try to review those in our um regular ZBA meeting next week. Um. And as a reminder, we have site visits. On the twelfth. This the Saturday. This is gonna be warmer, I hope. No, it's cold. Um. Are there any other matters? That I didn't anticipate that you would like to raise?
Maybe just a question, uh Sarah. Has there been discussions about going at least hybrid in the not-too-distant future?
It's my understanding that the 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 change in the meetings will not occur until the Board of Health removes the mask mandate. To the best of my knowledge, that is my hip curve.
That hybrid deal was a great idea then. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm assuming that. It will be coming. Before too long, but. Um.
Money well spent.
Um. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, okay, Catherine reappeared. John, do you wanna second it?
Second.
Okay, take a roll call vote. Jim?
Approved.
Ryan?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Don?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved. Sorry, I had to go to the bathroom before.
Spanish. Okay, thank you all. I appreciate. The time you spent preparing for this meeting and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, Sarah.